We'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to council meeting this evening. All members of the city council, all members of the city council are present. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Jackson Lamon and our opening remarks by Dan Fugel.
Will the audience please raise? Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we're grateful this night as a community and a council that we're able to meet and hear and discuss and strive to do our very best in helping Pleasant Grove be a pleasant place to live. We're grateful for this community and all it stands for and for Mayor and the council and all those are striving to do good things here in this community. We love thee Lord and pray thy blessings upon us all in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, thank you. We're gonna excuse Administrator Darrington this evening, he had a family project come up. Alright, there are a couple of changes to the agenda. Items number D and E have been continued to May 2nd, so whoever makes the motion if you could please include that. And then items G and H are switching places, we'll do H first and then G. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Ken?
If you could announce that there may be public here that were coming for those two items that are being continued.
Okay, you want me to announce what they are?
Yeah.
So if you are here for ordinance 2017-21, amending the Pleasant Grove City General Plan land use map for 1.67 acres located at 1783 West 1100 North from medium density residential to professional mixed use, that has been continued. And then if you're here for ordinance 2017-22, it's the same property and it's the land use map and it's from land use designation of medium density to professional mixed use. Did I get that right? They were both the same, it sounded like.
Well, one's a rezon and one's the general plan.
Okay, so those two have been continued. Again, property at 1783 West 1100 North, so you can duck out like ASAP, you'll be saving yourself a couple hours. Alright, are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, council, make the motion that we approve the agendas written with the continuance of items D and E on subsection nine and the reversal of the positions of items G and H in that same section.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sounds unanimous to me. We'll have an, oh, Ken?
I'm sorry, it appears that we still had a difficulty with item D and E, those are mirror the same thing, E is supposed to say something else.
Yeah, I thought it said they were the same, right?
So you were correct in that. So the E was supposed to say a rezon of acreage, not that same acreage in that area. I'm not sure how we got mixed up there, but either way, that's going to be at the next meeting.
So in this case, it's not continued, it's just not on the agenda?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I don't think that changes the motion or the effect anyway. Alright, so we're done with that. Let's go ahead now and have an open session. If there's anything on the agenda that is not a public hearing, or if there's something that you would like to bring up that's not on the agenda, please come up and state your name, you no longer have to state your address. And we're striving for peace and harmony in our community, so I've been asked to say that.
I'm here to blast you, don't that, so.
Well, I'm letting you know ahead of time, Mark. Okay, and then limit yourself to three minutes, please.
Mark Ryan, Pleasant Grove. Got this notice from the city about the gala celebration of the bulldozing of our old high school and recreational building going down. This is how you notified the public. Celebrate Ophia's Dance Hall Rec Center. There in anybody, I've been, I've asked many people this last two weeks, anybody heard of this? That's 100 years ago. It is the old high school. You haven't, and we're gonna have a gala celebration for the bulldozing of this building? You've gotta be kidding. This council has gone against the wishes and the caring of what this community wants. They wanna save this old building. I just wanna say, I'm just gonna vent.
Calm down, okay?
Well, this is me.
Thank you.
I have had 10 years of hoping that a city council would come forward and care about this. There were other choices. And ask, I don't know if any of you have been out in the community, but you ought to go out in the community and find out what the residents really want. They don't want you doing what you're doing. They want you to have your new buildings, we voted it in. I never thought that this was gonna happen, I really thought you, even though you don't make, you know, votes, I really thought you were gonna help spearhead this. This is what the community wants. You are here representing the public, the residents of our community, and they are not in agreement with you. Last thing here, this new building that just, excuse me, the height increase that's been approved, do you realize that you're gonna be committing density of nearly 80 units per acre in downtown Pleasant Grove? A city council that has taken away multifamily from many farmers out here that have wanted to sell their property, now they have to wait till they can sell it commercial, and you're gonna let some guy, a planning commissioner get, I mean, a planning commissioner get away with putting 15 apartments, two single-family residential units, and create rooms for a hotel? All on a quarter of an acre? A quarter of an acre? And I'm gonna ask you, please, don't give in to all of his requests. If everybody else in this town has to have two parking spaces per door, make him create two parking spaces per door. Don't give up city property to accommodate him for this development. Don't give in. I mean, you have stopped so many people from getting multifamily, and you're gonna allow 60 to 80 doors per acre, and he's gonna build a 68-foot tall building on a quarter acre of land? Please don't compromise our ordinances, don't change them for this guy. It's nice to have some buildings coming in downtown, but I don't think you're gonna be doing the right thing if you give him everything he wants just so you can get a tall building in downtown Pleasant Grove. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Atwood and I was just, oh, did you wanna, why don't you do this?
All I was going to say was that these two, and I don't see anybody else here, are new library board members, and I asked them to come so that they could introduce themselves, and she was getting started with that. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I'm Katie Atwood and I am just part of the new library board, and I'm just excited to learn the ropes and get a little glimpse of what politics on the city level is like. I've already gotten a little bit and it's just gonna be interesting. I have never really done this, so it's gonna be interesting, I'm excited.
I'm Emily Hammerstad, new to the board. I was born in Pleasant Grove and lived here all my life, and I'm excited to be on the board and get to be more involved, though I don't envy your guys' jobs.
Thank you.
Welcome, Katie, Emily, it's great to have you here.
Jacob Zantz. So I just wanted to report on our activities for the past couple weeks, three weeks or so. So this all really started back in 2016 when we started talking about the roads and how to fix them and our plans for the city. And that's what got me started in this, I wasn't really involved in city politics before then, I was more of a state politics type guy, but I got thrown in and now I'm super involved. So that was back in 2016. That's when we first announced that we might have a fee for the roads. And then in February of this year, February 28th, a fee was announced, that we would probably be doing that, we had about nine different options of how to fund the roads, most of which contained a fee, and so that was a bit concerning for some of us. So the next day, March 1st, we submitted an initiative, a group of six of us sponsored it, and we wanted the city to be able to decide where our priorities were. So then after that, we, the city was able to create their own fiscal impact statement, which they did over the course of about 28, 25 days, meeting up with the city council and all of the different people in the city, and they created that and put it on our initiative packets, and we grabbed those on the 28th. We printed them that night and the next morning, got them certified by Kathy, and then we went out and started gathering signatures. At first, we started out pretty small, there was the six of us, we gathered up a few more people, about 10 started gathering that Friday and Saturday. And then we started getting more people involved until we had about 20 to 25 people-ish, family members, friends, different people throughout the community who were concerned with us. And we gathered 2,248 signatures from, these are people who are registered voters here in Pleasant Grove. That makes up one-fifth of our registered voters here in Pleasant Grove. It was a really an amazing thing. Let me just tell you how proud I am of the people who came and helped with that. We only had two weeks, one of those weeks was over spring break, so no one was home, and yet we trudged along, tried to find everyone that was home, knocked on doors, about one in five doors would open, and it was just an amazing reception, though. As we came to the doors and talked to them about the roads and the concerns we had with the fee and how that might affect our city, and then the plans that we had with this initiative, we had overwhelming support. We had about 90% of people sign the initiative as we came to their doors. It was, it was just amazing. Then after, let's see, on April 14th was our deadline.
Jacob, can you wrap it up?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
On April 14th was our deadline, we submitted it to the county, and they'll be certifying those shortly. They have 30 days to do that, so expect a document from the county with that information. And I, I hope that this will unify the city. I saw a lot of people who were behind this.
Okay.
And I think it can be a unifying activity, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob.
I know him.
My name is Jackson Lamon, I live at 991 East, 450 South, PG. I'm part of the Pleasant Grove High School Hope Squad. The Hope Squad members are ambassadors of Pleasant Grove High and the community acting as the eyes and ears of our school. Our group is comprised of students selected by their peers who are trained to watch for at-risk students, provide friendship, identify warning signs, and seek help from adults. Hope for Utah works with school advisors to train students who have been identified by their classmates as trustworthy peers to serve as Hope Squad members. I'm here today to discuss something we are trained on this year, and that is cyberbullying. The definition of cyberbullying is deliberately using digital media to communicate false, embarrassing, or hostile information about another person. It is the most common online risk for all teens. There's a large variety of ways that a bully can harass a victim online. Examples are creating or altering photos, continually sending the victim hateful messages, rallying a larger group of people to humiliate someone, and spreading false rumors in order to hurt or embarrass the target. Doing these things anonymously is also a sign of cyberbullying. Both adults and teens can be victims of cyberbullying. My mom is Sid Lamon, and she's a member of the city council. A few weeks ago, I came home from school and saw a picture that was taken of her and turned into a meme that was embarrassing and put on social media. I knew this was a form of cyberbullying from the Hope Squad training I had received. Councilmember Anderson and councilmember Jensen have also been victims of cyberbullying. I told my mom that I wanted to do something about it, so I decided to come here today. As youth, we learn from our adults, from our parents, teachers, church leaders, and coaches, we learn from you and your example. It starts in the home, and if adults are acting like this, how are we expected to do any better? It is difficult trying to make a difference at the high school, being on the Hope Squad, when there are adults in our community doing this to others. As a community, there are things we can look for to stop cyberbullying. Number one, don't follow, like, or support social media pages that intentionally attack, embarrass, or hurt people. Number two, teach your children about the signs of cyberbullying and how they can make sure they are not a bully themselves. And three, teach your children to tell someone if they or someone they know is being bullied online. In closing, there's no reason to bully any, anyone online. Just because someone is different, just because someone is a different race or religion doesn't make it right. Just because they think or look differently doesn't make it right. Just because they are an elected official or share a different political view doesn't make it right. Please support me and the other Hope Squad members at Pleasant Grove High School by not cyberbullying and treating others, others with kindness. If you're willing to do this, please stand.
Okay, anyone else for the open session? Oh, sure. We can't, let's see. Tina, it's a rezon on downtown.
You said you're not gonna be here by then?
I'm meeting in stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we can take your, take your comments as part of the open session and then just make sure then the notes that we recorded as part of the public hearing.
My name's Jeff Hamilton, so I live 359 West, 4 North, I walk out the door and that plot of four acres is right there. So, I mean, I guess I would like to know, and maybe this is, I came to figure out what they're trying to rezon it as and exactly what it's, I called and I talked to a guy for a little bit and I didn't really get a lot of clarity. I guess it was commercial, and then it is proposed that it's going to be one to three units is what I got on the phone, and I just wanted clarity on what that really means and what it can be zoned for, and would love to propose that it should be zoned for single-family residents would be an ideal scenario for that spot. Do you guys have any answers, or is there someone that can answer those questions?
Are we opening the item to discuss?
No, we can't really have a discussion at this point, but yeah, go ahead and state your concerns and then we'll address them during.
It is recorded, so when we do hit that item, then you can watch it again and see that if you'd like.
So that's what you're gonna discuss when you get to item F, and you can't discuss it now because this is open?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
But Jeff, Jeff, this, Ken Young here in the corner is our community development director, you may be able to catch him between a break or something and just get some thoughts running.
He's the one I spoke to on the phone the other day, and he, I had to ask him some questions about if the land had been purchased, if it hadn't been purchased, and he was begging answering most questions.
The owner is sitting behind you.
Oh, perfect. Is this Costume Craze? Oh.
He bought it from Costume Craze.
Gotcha.
And the type of rezon is listed on the agenda. It's actually listed right there on what it's, what it is now and what it would be.
Yeah, so, I mean.
He would have to submit through community development what he wants to develop. This is a rezon.
Sure.
So it changes it from what it is now to a different type of use, but as far as what's allowed to be built, he would have to submit what he wants, and then it would have to comply with the city zoning ordinance for that.
Mayor, wouldn't he, maybe you can grab him after your comments and if you have, out in the hall?
I mean, I mean, the bottom line is if you look at Pleasant Grove and what we build is a bunch of transitional houses, that doesn't build a community is the bottom line. So that area I live in, and we have a new street in there, and the rest is older homes. So to keep the community and build a community, you literally, you need single-family residences. And so, I mean, that's the whole point, is there's plenty of millions of units, we had a huge senior facility right there, you could build a nice cul-de-sac, probably four acres, you could probably put 10, 12 units, .2 acre, .4 acre lots, make a nice community and build Pleasant Grove rather than, I mean, I know it's gonna be about the bottom line, I mean, I know reality, so he wants to see how many units you can put in there, but I don't know, I'm guessing that's the point of this meeting, is to have the ability to say, look, as a community, we want to, we have enough of transitional housing, let's put some single-family residents.
Okay.
So that's the whole.
So we understand where you're coming from, and when we get to that item, we'll have a discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else for the open session? I'm sorry, is Jeff Hamilton, is that right? Okay, Jeff. Alright.
Andy Carter. I wasn't expecting to hear what I heard when I came here, and so I'm feeling very shaky right now and emotional, and I, I wanna thank your son Sid for speaking up. My daughter was 11 years old and she was cyberbullied.
Can you pull that close to you?
And I had to take her out of school because she was suicidal, and it was horrible. I had to sleep with her for weeks on end because she had the worst nightmares, and I just can't even begin to tell you how horrible it is. And I know that it's not only children or youth, it happens to adults, and it makes me sick. I was bullied by my dad, and I absolutely cannot stand bullying of any kind. I don't care if it's political, I don't care if it's verbal, or if it's physical, I will not put up with it, and I will speak out against it. That's that simple. So I really admire what you're doing, and I'm so grateful that we have such great people and youth that care to talk about things that are difficult to talk about, because it's not gonna go away anytime soon. But I actually came here to talk about, sorry, I'm shaking really bad. I had a little discussion with Ben before, and I think I understand a little more about what the initiative means to some people, but I still find myself in disagreement with it, and I still don't like it, and I realize that's my own personal opinion, doesn't mean it's a fact that there's anything wrong or bad about it, but I don't like it. It still feels like a very strong-arm maneuver, and, and I felt like it was unfair when the city council came back and said this is what we would have to do in the city, and yes, there wasn't a discussion about road fees or taxes, because I know for the last six, seven years I've lived here, there has been a great majority of people who don't want any increases in fees or taxes, and they had been quite adamant and vocal and outright mad about it. So I felt it was unfair to classify that information that the city council and Scott Darrington presented as something that was disingenuous, because I felt like it was very sincere. It presented one particular option. I don't think it ever said there was no other option or choice, it just said this is what happened if we had to eliminate or cut services, okay? I've worked with the Pleasant Grove Police Department the past five years with Chief Smith. My husband was a president almost for five years honorary colonels. And I can tell you, it has been an eye-opener, and what I wanted to share with you, except I can't even get my phone open because I can't stop shaking, is that working with the police department really opened my eyes and really helped me to know what people do in a city, from the administration to the fire department to the police department to the parks and rec and so on. So I want to tell you personally, I know I'm out of time, I'm sorry.
Wrap it up, please, thank you.
But as honorary colonels, we have probably raised anywhere from, I would say $75,000 to $100,000 for the police department the past five years. My husband and I personally have taken care of the canine every year for five years, which we have been more than happy to do, and to think that we need to cut something really hurts me a lot. We lost seven officers last year because we can't pay them enough, and that is really sad. So I'm just telling you that it's not that simple, I know it's gonna take a combination of things, and I'd like us to all work together for that, but I don't like the initiative, I'm not gonna sign it, I have a neighbor who was asked to sign it, he was not explained what was in it, and he's not happy.
Okay, thanks, Andy, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else for the open session?
Carl Cooney. Two things. Sid, I agree with your son, okay? But I've been the victim of a cyberbullying and political attack by a councilwoman up on the stage. Okay? I had people question what kind of father I was, I had, I had a lot of things happen because a private conversation got spun and posted all over Facebook in the form of, so that person could be a victim. I had a 45-minute private conversation with a councilwoman. So as leaders of this city, please, I sat up here a year and a half, two years ago, I don't know how long, it's, it was a long time ago, though, and said, you know, after the second PSB meeting, you guys are digging a divide in this city. You're taking my track hoe and digging a trench down First East, and we're gonna have east side, west side. Nothing's changed. The event I'm speaking of happened after that. I sat, just like you Sid, and read comments, am I a horrible father, my poor wife, you know, do I belittle her, am I abusive? This is by a councilwoman. So I get it, but it goes both ways. Quite honestly, I got involved to try and make a difference, and I'm still trying to make a difference. I don't know what it's gonna take to kill the divide, but the trust is broken. Diana, I would've returned your phone call, but I can't trust, because the last time I trusted, I got plastered all over Facebook. True story. I share your feelings, I share your son's sentiments, we can all learn from it. But you guys are the leaders, it starts with you. It starts with you. I've begged ya, I, I've done a lot of things. On the, on the initiative, as one of the sponsors, there's a lot of people against it, there's a lot of people for it. I'm gonna tell ya, it wasn't hard to get signatures, the hardest part was people weren't home. The citizens will vote what they vote. Thank you. Let's all be better.
Okay, so before we continue, I just wanna make a comment. We're getting dangerously close to leaving the realm of what we should be discussing as a public and getting into what citizens should be discussing privately. Now, having said that, I recognize the concern in this particular case, I'm just gonna ask our council members to forbear from response, and let's just move on. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, just state your name.
Hello, I'm Christine Palmer, resident. So I have three minutes, right?
Yes.
So recently, I learned we are not going to have the Strawberry Days boutique, as we've had for a decade, almost, and I don't think a lot of our citizens are aware of that, and we're going to have a lot of backlash, I think, when they come to Strawberry Days. And I've been told that's in lieu of having an open house for the old rec center, but I think that is maybe targeting a minority population, whereas the boutique has proven that it attracts a large population demographically. Young people, the old people like to browse the boutique, they've loved it, that we've been, it's proven successful and effective in getting city members here. Anyway, so I think really we're, we're getting rid of that to go to a very small demographic, which I don't think they even need to be mutually exclusive. If you want to showcase the rec center, have pictures up or do it. If you want to showcase the Rec Center, have pictures up or do it Monday and Tuesday or Sunday after the concert or do an open house. But I think we're risking... I've loved the boutique. My daughter and I started participating in it four years ago. It's a way for citizens to spotlight what they do, to sell what they do, for citizens to get to know local businesses. And I think people are expecting it. So for, especially if it's the last year, to do away with it without even telling anybody, I think it's going to be, you know, I love spotlighting it, but I think it, it doesn't have to exclude having the boutique. I was given the phone number of the, the group that runs it, and I understand that there was some type of a contract, so she couldn't give me information, but if there's, that may be an even greater reason to try to salvage it if it's going to be a breach of contract. Maybe it can still be salvaged. Also, it generates revenue for Pleasant Grove rather than being a cost to Pleasant Grove as would a tour or a dance or something like that. It's a, not just the taxes, but the people that come to go to the carnival and maybe browse the boutique, and I, I don't want to go to the carnival, and I, I wouldn't want to go on a historic tour, but I would like to browse the boutique and buy local wares while my kids are riding the ride. So anyway, I just want to urge you to salvage the boutique, to work with whoever runs it because a lot of people really love it. I've had people come back four years in a row just for the boutique, so.
Who, who has a historic commission assignment?
I do, Mayor.
Ben, can you meet with Christine offline and just kind of get that idea? Maybe talk with the historic commission about some kind of joint effort there for the final?
I'd be happy to. Christine and I have actually talked earlier today, and I would love to do some research. Maybe Tina and I can sit down too and find out about what's possible in terms of, I don't know if it's too late for Kendra Sealy and the, and the boutique to do something in a joint way, but I think that would be great, and it might save us from breach of contract or something.
Do you have each other's contact info? Okay.
I do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else for the open session?
Lori Williams. I also agree with Mr. Lamone and with Carl Cooney, and as a citizen that entered in the political realm as being called names cyberbullying by a councilwoman, it's actually what got me involved in, in local politics. So I also think that it does start with the top, with the leadership. I had a boy that took his life with suicide, and I believe that it does start in the home, and that is one of the main reasons I even got involved, was being called names. Thanks.
Okay, so now I'm going to ask the same courtesy of the public. If you speak on this, just say that you agree with, and we don't, we don't need to go into the detail again, but just say that you agree with so-and-so on that subject. Okay? Anyone else for the open session?
I'm Shelley Harper. I'm the neighborhood chairman of the Northfield neighborhood. I have to address this issue because on Facebook, it has really gotten out of hand. One of our neighborhood chairmans came back after a year and a half mission, and he said, what happened to the pleasant in Pleasant Grove? Because it has gotten totally out of hand, attacking our public servants. I'm sorry. You guys put in a lot of hours outside of just this council meeting, and there is no reason to attack brutally by Caspian. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Jack Freeman. Having worked with youth for 30 years, I admire the courage of our youth to come and remind us of the example that we ought to be setting. I'm very grateful to live here in Pleasant Grove. I'm grateful for our city council and our city workers. I agree with those who have said comments about how people can be very hurtful and for what. It does no good to be ugly and to be unkind. And personally, I don't want to go somewhere else to live. I love this community that I have served for over what now 40 years. It, it, obviously, it penetrates my heart to see good people be unpleasant. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else for the open session? Okay, thank you all for your comments. Everyone is valuable. All right, let's move on to item six. These are consent items. Is there any discussion on the consent items? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent items.
No, second it.
We have a motion by Eric and a second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounded unanimous. Okay, let's move on to seven. There are no appointments this evening. Number eight, we have a presenter from Utah Local Governments Trust. Or I should say, presentation.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thanks for your time today.
Tell us your name again.
My name is Brent Okason. I'm with the Utah Local Governments Trust, and I'm here to present an award to the city. This past year, we have a program at the trust called the Trust Accountability Program, and for the first time, Pleasant Grove has taken part in this. For those that don't know what the trust is, we're an insurance mutual. We provide insurance products for over 500 entities throughout the state, including Pleasant Grove. We really appreciate your partnership in these things. As part of this program, I'd like to recognize those people that were involved in doing that and kind of talk about what it entails. What it is, is it's a program where cities put things in place to prevent losses and claims, and it's having an active safety committee. It's doing incident investigations. It's managing sewer systems and preventing backups and losses associated with those, preventing any type of employee injury or anything from car accidents to any type of damage. And so there's some really good things that come out of that program. I'd like to recognize David Larson. He, he shouldered a lot of this, this past year and put these, these programs in place. Also Scott Darrington, he supported this and was, was involved in making sure these things were happening. They did a great job at, at the city and all, all the staff really that were involved in doing this. And so I've got this award I'll leave with you today. We have found that of the 500 entities or so that we, we insured, there's about 90 that took part in this program this past year, and we found that those that are actually in this program, they have significantly fewer losses and claims. And so it's a really good program. There's good things that come out of it, and it's kind of a win-win for both the city and, and the trust. And so we really appreciate that and the partnership here. So with that, I will leave you with this award. Nice award you want to show off. A little crystal here for this, and, and along with this comes a check, which we sent out earlier this year, which is 5% of your liability premium.
Don't take the check, David.
I'll take that.
$7,522, so congratulations. Patience.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move into our public hearing items. We'll start with item nine A. This is a public hearing to consider for adoption and ordinance, 2017-18, amending city code 10-15-14F and G flaglots. The request is to amend the STEM and common STEM development standards by increasing the maximum length allowed for a common STEM as well as the number of lots that can be served by a common STEM only for landlocked properties in the RR and A1 zones and providing for an effective date. Ken?
Okay, Mayor and Council, this, actually, this item A and letter B and letter C are all related, and so this has been in the works for quite some time. The applicant, or applicants are Dennis Thane and Cindy Boyd. Dennis Thane approached the city over a year ago, expressing desires to have his property that is currently outside of the city boundaries be annexed in to sit, to the city of Pleasant Grove. It is currently within the boundaries of Cedar Hills, and when we brought this forward about a year ago, the city council determined that perhaps there were some other items that should be further explored before it came back to the city, which since have, and one of which is that the request to de-annex or boundary adjust from Cedar Hills to Pleasant Grove has been approved by the Cedar Hills City Council. So the final step in this request is that the city council of Pleasant Grove approve the boundary adjustment, and then his property can be annexed in. So that's not really what this first item is about, but the reason why I bring that up is because this affects the annexation. So the request is that a flaglot, which currently off of a local road or not an arterial or collector width road, the maximum lots that can be built off of that are three, and that the maximum length of a stem is 300 feet. The 300-feet length does not work for the situation that Mr. Dennis, or Mr. Thane's property is in, and I'll show through some exhibits here. I'll go to the exhibits first, and then we'll come back to the verbiage that's being proposed as amending the ordinance. So this is a, a map of Pleasant Grove and Cedar Hills in the north area, the Manila area. That which is by aerial view, where you can see the properties, is in Cedar Hills, and the green properties are in, in Cedar, in Pleasant Grove. So both the red outlined and the blue outlined properties here are owned by Mr. Thane, and then the, the yellow or orange property below is owned by Cindy Boyd. They have come together for various reasons on this application, but we'll discuss first the reasons for Mr. Thane's application. So again, this, in fact, that's not working. All right, so the, the red outlined Cedar Hills property has been approved to boundary adjust by the Cedar Hills City Council, and you can see the, the shape and existing situation of the Pleasant Grove property is a flaglot. And it was at one time planned to be a roadway that would extend further north into that area. But as you can see on the map where it says Dennis Thane Properties in black, in that area, a subdivision was approved with a cul-de-sac, which kind of changed the alignment or the necessity for the road to continue up and through that area, plus the fact that it was going into Cedar Hills Properties, and there wasn't any proposal for working together on that area. So the actual need or planning for an extended roadway through Mr. Thane's property at this location kind of went away. So his, even though it's a wide flaglot stem and could be used as a roadway, it is being used only as a flaglot stem for one lot at this time. To be able to access his property, if we do annex it into Pleasant Grove, the, the red Cedar Hills property, it would need to be accessed somehow into Pleasant Grove, and going to the west doesn't work because there's other properties that are developed that are up against a cul-de-sac there. The only viable connection is through this southern property and accessing it through a flaglot stem. However, the difficulty we have in our current ordinance is that the maximum length of flaglot stem is 300 feet. This distance from 4,000 north to the north end of this property, of the Pleasant Grove property, is almost exactly 400 feet, just slightly under. So the request is that we allow, in very limited circumstance, an extension of a flaglot stem to be 400 feet, and that would then allow Mr. Thane to access his property, create a new flaglot subdivision that could have this property as part of, of that new subdivision. And then Cindy Boyd has asked to come on as part of this application because it's the same section that's being amended, that in this circumstance, whenever we have a, a flaglot that's created for this type of situation, in other words, let me back up to the verbiage so we can be clear what we're talking about. The request is to extend to 400 feet and may be approved only for landlocked properties. So that is exactly the situation that the, the red Cedar Hills property is in. It is landlocked. There is no other access to it. So in that instance, may be approved where there is no access available through planned roads as shown on the Pleasant Grove Streets vicinity plan, only within the RR Rural Residential and the A1 Agriculture zoning districts. Also, extended length and turnaround must be approved by the city fire marshal. So we felt in our review by staff and, and through the planning commission's review that this is a very limited circumstance. It probably won't happen again because we're talking about a landlocked property and only in that, those particular areas. So we, we felt like it was a reasonable request. It's not going to be opening a floodgate of new flaglot subdivisions that could take advantage of this. So also, Cindy Boyd has requested to be a part of the request here. Couple items down in that section. It talks about the maximum number of lots that can be served off of a flaglot stem. Currently, we have two categories. One is three lots for common stems that abut a local road, and five for common stems that abut a collector or arterial street. Cindy has asked that we add in a third component, which we've broken down into A, B, and C, so this would be B, four commons, four lots for common stems that abut a local road where the STEM road has been approved for an extended length, see subsection 10, 15, 14, F3 above. So it would be only in this circumstance where an extended roadway has been approved, where four could be permitted. So again, this would be a very, very limited situation that could be approved. So we, from staff's perspective, Mr. Thane's request to amend the ordinance is necessary, at least for the extension of the, the common stem, in that it will provide a legal opportunity for a subdivision to be created to have his property then be able to be annexed into the, into the city, without which we would be kind of in a quandary. We, we've annexed him in, but we haven't provided a legal opportunity for access. So that portion of the ordinance, we feel is, is necessary if we feel like we would like to annex the property. Cindy Boyd's request is not necessary in this instance, but it is her request, and we don't have any concerns necessarily with that in that the stem is lengthened, so there's not going to be a lot of additional traffic that will be having concern there. So we, we recommend it from staff approval. This has gone forward recently to the planning commission and received unanimous recommendation for approval.
Okay, so A is for the changes.
A is for the...
B is to modify the boundaries of the city.
Right. Right.
And then C is to annex them in.
Annuate that property.
Okay, so they're all related, but we'll take them one at a time.
Talk a little bit further about those other two items.
I haven't mentioned them, but we're going to open them up one at a time.
Okay. So, moving on to B, so I didn't show that visual, there was just the extended length at 400 feet, and a proposed layout of a four-lot flag lot subdivision that could work. The lines not being exact, it would have, but that's just conceptual. All right, so then the second item, B, is to amend the annexation policy plan, which we did do recently when we were looking at the Anderson property. So, we've, again, made some minor amendments to it, so that we can allow for Dennis Thane's property. And then, okay, so then there's maps. So, currently, in the plan, it shows the Anderson property over against the bench area. We're eliminating that and putting another circle up where Dennis Thane's property is. Otherwise, the map is the same. And then just adding that close-up of the Thane property. Okay, and then, this is the annexation plat, so that would be the third item that we would be approving to let this property come into Pleasant Grove.
Okay. All right, let's open it up to the public, then. If you have any questions or comments on changing of the code to allow for the flag lot adjustments, and also the length of the stem, please come up and state your name, and then let's hear from you. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion for council?
I have a question.
Yep.
We show that it was approved unanimously by the planning commission, but Ken, I don't see in our packet what the outcome was from the fire department. It says additionally, staff recommends requirement for approval of the extended length by the fire department, but I didn't see if the approval was received, or if they had any concerns, and maybe Chief Thomas, you can address that. I just want to make sure everything was covered on your end, because I didn't see it in the packet.
We had conferred with Cody, and I think Dave and I also spoke about this, that this was a suggestion to have that verbiage in there, so.
Yeah, so, as far as we know, MISA criteria, so. No objections, then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Can I just clarify something?
Yes.
So, the, the language in the ordinance that you're speaking about is a requirement for each application coming forward. So, you're not actually approving their site plan and needing something from the fire marshal on this particular building. What you're doing is saying, if anybody comes through with an application to build on an extended flag lot, the fire marshal's going to have to make sure that access is appropriate, regardless of the length, whether it's 400 or 300, in order to make sure that it's safe. Does that make sense?
So, on this one, we're just modifying the code to allow for both length and number of units.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
A couple, a couple of quick procedural questions, Ken. You talked about how a second applicant joined the application and added some additional language. The planning commission reviewed all of that, though, in this final form, is that correct?
So, last year, the planning commission heard only Dennis Thane's proposal, and then just a couple weeks ago, the planning commission heard the addition, which was actually modifying slightly the language that Dennis Thane had earlier proposed, and then also what Cindy Boyd had proposed. So, planning commission has reviewed both.
Okay, and when we add a second applicant to an application like that, do we have a second fee? How does the procedure work in that way?
Well, there isn't a set policy on that, but in that, it was the same section of code that was being amended, and it was being related. The one was related to the other. It just felt appropriate to combine it into one. We waived an additional fee because we didn't feel that was necessary. We were going through the same process, anyway.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we adopt ordinance 2017-18, amending city code 10-15-14 FNG flag lots. Request to amend the stem and common stem development standards by increasing the maximum length allowed for a common stem, as well as the number of lots that can be served by a common stem, only for landlocked properties in the RR and A1 zones, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion by Sid, and a second by Eric, by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Voting is unanimous. And item B? Any further discussion on that? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for the public comment, then. This is going to be to change the boundary, the boundary declaration for the City of Pleasant Grove to include this parcel of land that we just discussed. So, if you have any comments, please come up and state your name. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and come back up here. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion for adoption of ordinance 2017-19 to amend the previously adopted annexation declaration policy plan in order to include a .574 acre parcel located at 4087 North Canyon Road into the designated annexation areas of the city, and providing for effective date.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Eric, and a second by Diana, by voice. Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion is unanimous. Okay, and then item C is to actually annex the parcel. Any further questions for staff? Oh, let's open it up for the public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to comment on the annexation, please come up and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, come back up here. Any further questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance 2017-20 to adjust the boundary, boundaries of Pleasant Grove City and Cedar Hills City by annexing a .574 acre parcel designated in the annexation policy plan, located at 4087 North Canyon Road. The property will be assigned a general plan land use designation of very low density residential, and a zoning of RR, and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Diana, and a second by Lynn. Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Lynn?
Voting is unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We'd like to welcome you to Pleasant Grove.
Congratulations, after a very long and extended trek. Hopefully, you'll make it on to the next part. All right, we have, we have previously continued items D and E. We're now going to hear item F. I think Mr. Hamilton had to leave. So, this is a public hearing to consider for adoption in ordinance 2017-23 to rezone approximately four acres from downtown village zone, commercial sub-district, to downtown village zone transitional subject, sub-district, on the north portion of the property located at 350 West Center Street, and providing for an effective date. This is, the front half has costume craze, and the back half is open field.
Okay, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor and Council, over the last several months, staff has been working with the planning commission in reviewing the downtown village zone, and have come up with several proposals for amending that zone. One of those was this particular item. So, even though we have not yet amended the entire code, that is coming soon, to come before you, but this is a separate item that was recommended, that the back half of this property receive a transitional sub-district zoning, rather than the commercial sub-district zoning that is currently on it. The reasoning for that is, there have been several attempts and inquiries over many years for developers who would like to see something that just can't happen there. They wanted to put apartments, or many different types of things that, you know, large-scale apartments that we weren't permitting, and we told them in the commercial sub-district, it would require a commercial component, and that, in that the existing costume craze was on the same property.
Ken, can you just tweak that microphone?
Yes. Sorry. In that the costume craze was already there, we considered that any new development would also need to require new commercial component, and this has been very challenging for the people who've looked at it, mostly because the access to that back into the property is on 400 North. So, to get to that, you're coming off of Center Street, going up Sixth West, and then turning east on 400 North, and it's not really conducive to commercial traffic or frontage. So, we looked at that, and we decided that perhaps a transitional zoning on that would be better. Transitional has an emphasis on residential. It does allow for limited, non-intensive-type commercial uses, and it does allow for certain types of smaller, not high-intensive multifamily residential to be built, without the requirement of a commercial component.
So, can, can you give an example of what that would be?
Yes, and so, we discussed last fall here with council, what, what we thought would be appropriate, and this is coming forward as an ordinance amendment, that it would be no more than three units that could be attached together, and it would be a building that would be designed to fit in, to look, replicate a single-family residential home. So, they could be clustered in groups, but there would not be a row of townhomes, there would not be three-story apartment buildings, anything like that. It would be homes that would have three units in them. So, it'd be a small neighborhood of, of homes. That would be the maximum that could be permitted in that area.
Okay, anything else, Ken? You want to continue?
Uh, this has been reviewed by the downtown advisory board as well. The planning commission recommended unanimously for approval.
So, what, what would be the maximum density in a case like 10? 10? 10 per acre? Okay.
What would be the maximum height? I can't.
Same as in the residential areas, 35 feet, two stories.
Any questions?
Yes, on 10, on, 10 units on an acre? Is that what you just said?
Per acre, yes.
What is that size of lot? Just really quickly break that down for me. 42,000?
Okay, well, yeah, so that would be 4,200 or 4,300 square feet. This is not anticipating that size lot, because we do have a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet in the downtown village zone. So, what we're looking at is a, a development that is not broken down by individual lots, necessarily, but it would allow for-
So, it would be averaging?
Averaging, yes.
Okay.
Other questions for Ken? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Let the record show that Mr. Hamilton has expressed concern about changing the zoning that allows anything more than single-family residential in that area.
And if I may just address that, I felt bad that Mr. Hamilton felt our conversation wasn't clear enough for him to understand. I thought perhaps that it was his main question that I wasn't able to answer then, was that the, the purchase of the property had gone through, and I had to clarify that, which, of course, that's already been done. But that, in its existing zoning of the commercial sub-district, there is a higher density available than what this zoning will go. So, this is actually, as far as density is concerned, a downzoning in, in density. So, if anybody has concerns about the type of density that we're putting on it, we're actually giving less now. Previously, prior to the costume craze property being included into the downtown village zone, that back end, a large portion of it was in the R18 zone, and so that would have been just single-family homes. But it has been a part of the downtown village zone, commercial sub-district, for at least four or five years now. So, that's, it, it, this is actually a density downzoning, it is not upzoning.
Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. If you have comments on this particular request, if you could come up and state your name, please.
My name is Becky Johnson, and I live on 319 North, 300 West, so we have just a couple homes, well, I should say, one line of homes between myself and the property in question. As he mentioned, the property was zoned half-commercial and half-residential, and the reason that it was rezoned was to allow for the flag lots of the three homes right between myself and the lots.
Do you have a pointer there?
Do I? I-
If you squeeze the button on the side, you should be able to show us what you're talking about.
This is fun! No, I'm kidding.
Except for that, it shows exactly how nervous you are, because it just starts shaking.
Two hands.
You can't control it.
All right, yee-haw! Okay, there is me, and here are the flag lots that were put in, and then you have the, the road as well that comes in, and then here's the, the lots in question. So, this part was residential, and this part was commercial, and they were separate, separate lots. So, this was, this is costume craze. And when costume craze came in and asked for this to be all commercial, so that these could become lots, and they were asked during that time by the council whether or not she would ever consider putting homes in there, ever. And she goes, "No, I want to keep this property in order to expand my business and build out my business." And so, there was, in my mind, there was never a possibility that she could separate that tax-wise, in order to sell that property, and for us to be in the position we are now. And so, I would say I agree with Jeff Hamilton in saying that I would love this to be a single home, or single-family dwellings in all of that property. In fact, the comment I made before, when we were in this position, when the flag lots were brought in, or in support of the flag lots, that I would rather have the pipe plant in my backyard shaking my home when they dropped those pipes, rather than have multiple family housing there, just because of the traffic, the garbage, the mess, and often the police presence, because those properties often go down in value, and they often go down in, apparently, neighbors. We, and I would agree with Jeff Hamilton again, we have enough of the apartments, we have enough of, as you would say, the multiple apartments in those dwellings. Whatever you're saying, you said 10 within those three-
An acre.
Yeah.
10 per acre.
And so, I would say, no, please, no, please, no.
Thank you.
Single-family dwellings.
Okay. Anyone else?
My name is Lorna Loy. Where's that little pointer thing? The pen? Oh. And I live in this lot right here. So, I'm right on the border, and we've had to install a fence in that area, because there are a lot of traffic, kids, older kids who drive, who will come down this road, and they like to hang out right here in this area. It's empty, it's where deliveries come, and so, a lot of action happens in here. We've had the police call to this area as well. And so, I think if we have apartments here, it'll be a lot more traffic. I'm just going to mimic what everybody has said, Jeff and Becky. This road here, our access road, is, is pretty skinny. It barely allows two cars to go by each other, so I don't see that as a good access for this area. And already, we have the senior living. It's really nice to have the storage in between all of us and the senior living, because even that has high traffic, and people are starting to park on that 400 North Road already, because their own parking area has exceeded their capacity. And so, I imagine it will even grow worse, and the same for our area if apartments were to come. And so, I would agree with everyone, I would prefer it to stay single-family because of that, and for safety, if they were to do apartments, I would really like to request we have a wall in that area for us, if, if it goes that way, but I'm against the apartments as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I am Kylie Hatch, and I live right in this lot right here. I will mimic what both my neighbors have said. My greatest concern about having multifamily housing there is probably the safety of the children we have in that neighborhood, and even in this field right here. Every Saturday, probably at least 10 young children, ranging from a year-old to 10-years-old. And, in my opinion, with, just like what my neighbors have previously said, in my opinion, with- with multifamily housing, there's the high turnover, and then I personally feel that it's a risk for children, and especially if there's history of police being called over. That's my greatest concern of having multifamily housing there. And I would also, if they do go that direction, I would love to have a wall there as well so that the children can continue to roam on that street. Our neighbors are really good about having slow traffic, but with more, with more people, the more people that will be coming on that road, greater speeds, the greater risk for children at play. So that's my greatest concern about it being built there.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Lee Conant, and we are actually developing the property...
Sorry, can you spell your last name?
C-O-N-A-N-T.
You can actually pick that mic right up, and then you don't have to bend over like that.
All right. A piece of property is all one piece of property. The Costume Craze and the property we're looking at now is all one piece of property. It's all currently zoned commercial, and so there's no residential zoning in there. However, the commercial zone that we have does allow us to do residential at a more significant density than we're talking about here. We started working with Planning Commission, I want to say, in October. Does that sound right? To try to come up with something that would make sense here, and we agreed that to downzone this, and we put a lot of limitations on what we can do here. First, no building can have more than three units in it. So it's not like you're going to see 10 units in a row in one building. No building can have more than three units. So what you're going to see mostly are two, like twin homes and triplexes be built in here. They have to be built so that they mimic the single-family homes that are in the neighborhood. We don't want people playing in here. We don't want people driving in behind Costume Craze right here. As you know right now, that is where our trucks come in and back up and unload right there. We want all of that to stop and all of that to go away. We want all of the dumping and the other things that are happening in this part of our property to go away. We believe that with this location, with the new trail that's been built here, with the housing that's built here, and the fact that there's housing here, that this is a very logical transition for us to make. We're not planning on doing apartments. We're planning on doing a for-sale product, and I know we always argue over what kind of people live in these apartments or in these townhouses. And, you know, I always say the same thing. That's where I started, was in a place like that. And so sometimes we have a tendency to just lump everybody into this category when they're not. They're young couples. They're couples that are getting ready to move on and do bigger and better things. It's our intention to make this a very high-end development that takes advantage of the trails that are there and secures this area, both from your neighborhood as well as from what's going on down here. Can I answer any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have, so in this mixture of homes, there are single homes in this or not? Or is it all three?
It's probably going to be all twos and threes. Now, we did all kinds of layouts just to show the planning commission what you might could do, what, if you could do this, if you could do that. I think in one of those layouts, we had one single-family home, but realistically, they're going to be twos and threes.
I've got a quick question. Now, listening to the comments of Lorna and Kylie and Becky and Jeff also earlier, one of the things that I heard was this idea of a wall. Now, the wall could be built by the residents on one side of the property, or it could be built by the owner of the other property. Is there any appetite or interest in something?
Well, please don't make me commit yet. You may make me commit later. But don't make me commit yet.
I'm curious, yeah. I don't think we can at this point.
But we haven't handed an application in yet.
Right.
But normally, when I do this kind of project, I would wall it all the way around. I would want to control the entrance. If we have an emergency exit that goes out here, I would want to control that. So I would want it controlled. I have the same concerns for safety for my residents that you people do for your residents. So that's, as I stand here, I can think of a couple of these that I've done without walls, but they had 800 units in them. I mean, they covered acres and acres and acres. They weren't small boutique units like this.
Thanks, I appreciate those thoughts.
One more. Did you ever consider doing the R-18, or is it just not, you don't get enough?
It just, it just doesn't work. We'd be better off just to stay commercial and put commercial in there, and we thought this was an upgrade from what a commercial use would be. You're not going to get, as Mr. Young said, you're not going to get typical drive-by retail in here. You're going to get some other kind of commercial use because there's no access. People don't have access to it.
Do you, are you one of the owners of Costume Craze then, or part of owner?
No.
Or you said this is all separate?
Here's what we did. We bought everything and leased the building back to Costume Craze. So we own it all, and Costume Craze leases the building, and they have a long-term lease. I mean, their intentions are long-term.
So tonight, what we're looking at is rezoning from strictly...
Commercial sub-district.
Right, I'm just looking for the exact language. Downtown village commercial to downtown village transitional.
That's correct.
We're not approving a site plan. We're not approving housing units, look, feel, anything like that.
Be honest with you, Planning asked us, would we take the time to go through this rather than jump the gun and submit an application with what was already allowed under your commercial zoning? And we agreed.
And the notes state here that the current zoning allows for heights up to 55 feet or four stories, and the zoning being proposed allows for two levels or 35 feet.
That's correct.
So it's almost half. It's definitely half in stories, but it's almost half in height. Any other questions for...
And along that same line, it goes from 12 units an acre to 10 units an acre.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. Conant? Did I pronounce that right?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're going to...
Conant, by any chance?
Pardon?
Are you related to a Will Conant, computer programmer?
He is my son.
He's a great man.
Yes, he is.
Brilliant, a brilliant, brilliant mind.
Brilliant man.
All right, let's go ahead and close the public hearing then and bring it back up here. Further discussion, council?
It is a hard one, right? But I would think you'd much rather want, instead of the commercial, the transitional because, just because of the impact it could have to your great neighborhood there. And so that's kind of lines I'm thinking right now, just because of the height and the density that could come that you already have there.
And I know we're not talking about a product yet, but the fact that it would be owner-occupied is very, that is favorable to me as well.
And the process, if the council were to approve this, what are the next approval phases for someone to move forward? What, would it come back before the council? Any of this?
No. The site plan for downtown village zone requires approval by the planning commission. So the only site plans that are approved by city council are in the Grove Zone.
And how do the residents' concerns get addressed if the zoning's taken care of and then it goes to site plan?
It is a public hearing at the planning commission, and they are noticed.
Ken, can you give some, maybe an example of a commercial that would go back there that's four stories? I mean, office or...
An office building. We did try to encourage office back there, but even with that, we had difficulty getting anybody taking interest in that simply because of the access, and it just didn't seem to work for any of the people that we've talked to on that. An office building would be one. There are other types of, well, retail could go in there if it was a destination retail type of a thing that didn't necessarily look for street frontage as their need, but there, I mean, you look at Costume Craze, they're not a retail, but say there was some type of similar business that was retail in nature but was destination, but that's a very particular type of commercial opportunity, and it just, the location of this property is just challenging.
I like the idea of going from something that currently allows 55 feet, four stories, and 12 units per acre to something automatically more restrictive, two stories, 35 feet, 10, density of 10 per acre, which lends itself more towards what the residents are looking for. I'm also, at the same time, concerned that the residents in that area do need to be comfortable with their neighbors. You know, they need to be comfortable with what's going to go on there. So it would really fall to the planning commission to hear what they have to say and kind of, you know, weigh that in the decision-making. But having said that, when zones are put in place and uses are established and densities are established, you know, an applicant can come in, and unless there's something really wrong with the presentation, they're already approved for whatever entitlements are on that land. So we have to be careful right at the outset on the decision-making.
And that's where we are now. We are approved.
You're already approved for 55 feet and four stories and 12 units per acre. I mean, he gets either. Yeah. And this one, it does allow, right? 12 units per acre. So there's a trade-off there that needs to be looked at. Council, other comments?
Yeah, a quick question for Ken. So these residents will get noticed with the planning commission at the next stage if a site plan's brought forward, even though it won't come to us.
That's correct. And in that, we have not yet received their application and hasn't been reviewed by staff. There's no date as to when that will happen, but I anticipate it'll be sometime in the next several months we'll be dealing with this.
So there will be an option to see that notice and participate at the planning commission level. I have, you know, I have the generalized concerns of the residents in mind, but on the strength of the planning commission's unanimous recommendation and the fact that this is actually a lower density than what's allowed now, I'm favorably disposed to the idea.
So generally, we don't take any more comments from the public after we've closed the public hearing? Yes, if the applicant comes in and requests that a part, that something be changed to a different zone, it can be looked at by the council, the staff, and the planning commission, and if it makes sense, then the change would happen. But in this case, it's moving in a different direction, and you've got someone who's actually interested in development. So we're trying to figure out the balance there. Ken, R-18, it's 8,000 square feet. What does that work out per acre? Five? Six?
Yeah, five would be a maximum, especially when you're putting in a roadway. It really kind of turns out more to be four, and especially when you're dealing with land that's got an odd shape like this. Land and roadway is going to limit you more than acreage availability.
So to the right of this development or this property, we see R-18. What is the acreage there then with the road and everything else?
Are you talking about the subject property?
Existing, to the right, to the east.
Is R-18...
The R-18 zoned area?
That's about five?
It's between four and five.
Okay. So four and five, jumping to, and what's the practical when you say 10?
It's going to be quite a range because it, not having seen any kind of a plan that takes into account roadways and parking and all that, it's difficult for us to say. Now, I do know through experience, when we've seen these, that 10 is a maximum, but it's going to be very, very challenging for them to get close to that.
It's going to be challenging, and there's not enough room for 10? Or challenging, and they're going to squeeze it in?
In that, there's going to be a need for parking and open space and roadways that are going to take up some of that acreage.
Mr. Conant, from a practical perspective, what do you envision it being?
It would be foolish of me to say that I have looked at anything but 10.
So be foolish with us.
Well, but in also, here's what he's talking about. We have to meet all your road requirements. We've got to reach your sidewalk. We have to reach, we have to have your setback requirements. We have to meet your parking requirements. We have to do all those things. Now, we have done a number of plans doing those things with various products, and we can get 10 on. Some of them, we've got 37 units, some we've got 36 units, but we get pretty close to 10 units, and I would be dishonest to you to say, approve this because I'm only going to get six.
No, but I think what you said was the units themselves would be three per unit.
Well, part of our agreement with, as I understood, the approval by planning and zoning was we could not have any buildings that had more than three units in it. So you wouldn't have any, you know, I mean, it'd be a lot easier for us to get 10 per acre if we could put six buildings in a row, you know, all attached to each other. But part of the approval was we could only have a maximum of three units in one building. So what we're going to see is twos and threes. So mayor, if I may, if we look at the same approximate acreage on the neighborhood to the east, so four acres, and if we're doing four to five units per acre, then we're talking somewhere around the neighborhood of 18 homes. So he's suggesting 36. So, yeah, we're probably doubling the density here. It is a different product. It is a multiple-family, but... And if we can legally get, if we can get 40 and it works, we'll get 40. I don't want to lie.
We understand the legality of it. We're looking at the practical application.
Right. But then if it were to be developed in the current zoning with four stories, you'd get a lot more. I would have to figure out what that would be, but it would be a lot more than 36. If I can easily get the 12 units per acre, will the other height restrictions not have an issue?
Did you have a comment?
I was just saying, Becky, you would get close to what you have over by me if you have your current zoning. You'd have close to what you have over by me behind the bar and that, so...
Except that those are more...
They're more, yeah, but we're talking height and density, so...
It'd be two stories maximum, 35 feet.
If you go with what they currently have, current zoning.
Oh, for the current zoning, sorry. Yeah, misunderstood. Thank you. So you're going to see a bunch of what looks like single-family homes with three units each in them?
Two or three.
Okay. Council, other questions, comments, discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adopt the ordinance on the strength of the planning commission's recommendation, number 2017-23, to rezone approximately four acres of the downtown village zone commercial sub-district to downtown village zone transitional sub-district on the north portion of the property located approximately 350 West Center Street and providing for an effective date.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Ben, second by Diana Lynn.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Diana.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we need to move to item H, which is...
Can we send some water down?
Yeah, we switched. Sorry?
I was asking for some water. Thanks.
All right. Did we lose Sid? Step down. Okay, item H is a public hearing to consider for adoption in ordinance 2017-24 to amend section eleven fifteen inspection fee for provision, inspection fee provisions of Pleasant Grove City Code to add a provision assessing fees for testing and inspection of construction and development. The request includes a requirement for developers to prepay inspection costs, which will be placed into an escrow account and drawn upon as inspection costs are incurred by the city. Any overage or shortage of the escrow account will be coordinated with the developer. These inspection costs include project inspections, testing, GPS locating, and mapping, and providing for an effective date. Marty?
Mayor, counsel, glad to be here talking a little bit more about what I see as our future of needing to have proper inspection and testing for the improvements that the city is taking on. And they become a very huge liability for us if we don't do those things properly, if we are not making sure that those improvements are installed adequately. We've got good compaction around them. They're doing a good job. And so about probably nine months ago, I started looking into this and started compiling some information about a way to maybe approach the council and propose some new fees that would help us better do this. And currently, we have, we, last week, we honored Clarence for his part-time inspection services that he's provided for the last eight years and did a great job with the time that he had. Was very valuable to us, and we've recently hired a full-time city inspector. And we expect that he's going to do a very good job for us as well, but we're going to get a little bit more in-depth with our development work being done and making sure that we're having a touch on it every day and making sure that we're we're holding those contractors that are working for developers to the same standard that we would like to accept and make sure that we're getting the quality and that taken care of. So that's why, that's kind of a little bit of the history. As we did that, we looked over a number of cities. We called around to a bunch of the public works offices and tried to determine which cities currently require an inspection fee. And I think that would be, let me just throw a little information over here. What we found was a variety of different ways to charge the fee, but the fee was charged in a number, many of the municipalities that we checked. And so, for example, we have Santaquin City. They currently require four percent of the bond. They are very similar. We've structured what we're proposing tonight based on how Santaquin City currently does that, and I'll have a quick explanation for that. Payson City, they have a fee, four hundred per, I go up too far, sorry, per residential lot, two percent of bond total amount, six percent of bond for the commercial developments. So everybody has a different structure of how they're doing it. This is what I'm proposing to you as a way that we feel comfortable in doing that for Pleasant Grove is what we'll talk about tonight. There's a list of eleven cities here. Everybody has a way to do it, but they all charge some sort of a fee for development. Currently, there are no inspection fees being charged to developers, yet we're spending significant amount of time trying to make sure that these improvements are going in properly and that we're accepting those. And so...
Marty, can you make that bigger for the older woman far, far away?
I can.
You are referring to yourself?
Yes.
Are we there yet?
No, I was talking about Kathy.
Anyways, is that big enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So West Bountiful's three percent, Farmington's two percent, Santaquin's four percent. One of the things that's a little bit different is, and the way that Santaquin does it and that we're proposing to do that is that we feel that it's, we don't have enough experience to know how much this is going to cost a developer to just say, okay, developer, you're going to pay me one percent of your total bond amount, and that is what's going to be required for your inspection fee. A number of cities do that. Many do that, in fact, because it takes a lot of the work out of trying to manage how much time you're spending on these projects and billing them for. However, in talking with Tina a little bit further about this, we didn't feel like we have enough information to say, well, I charge you two percent, I only use one percent, and then possibly a legal challenge on that. So we felt that this is a good way to do it for us that we'll talk about here in a second. However, these cities all do it a little bit differently. Some do it by, the bond is posted, they draw on that bond and return that. Others just say, give me two percent, and that's your inspection and testing fees for the development work. So, and also just to clarify, we're only talking about development work as is approved by either planning commission, site plans, subdivision work. This is not if somebody, if a resident comes in and say they want to do a new sewer lateral into a home, there wouldn't be, there's other different fees that we'll be talking about on May second that talk about the impacts to our road system and infrastructure to do that. This is only for development work or inspection services that are required for them to tie into or to construct improvements that we're going to be accepting. So what, if we look at what is in your packet, and you, please ask questions at any time if there's something. I'm down to, so we're amending this section eleven fifteen dash one. And under, actually, it's eleven fifteen four is what we're adding to that eleven fifteen section, and it's called testing and inspection fee. Here's the information with regards to doing that. Essentially, a developer comes in. We've approved his site plan. There is a cost, a bond amount that's required as part of that development. We'll take three percent of that estimated bond amount for improvements within the right-of-ways that we're going to be accepting, any public improvements. Three percent of that would go into an escrow fund. That fund would be in their name for their development. As we go and do inspection services on their development, we will track that time. We're expecting that could be anywhere from myself, an engineer, a public works inspector, some of our supervisors, or some of our workers at public works. And then we also could be hiring if we wanted to bring in somebody as a second kind of a check if somebody were questioning their geotechnical services that they didn't provide us correct compaction information. For example, we would call in our own kind of side-by-side testing. Those are the types of things that we would see billed back to the contractor, and it would be taken out of that three percent bond, escrow bond that's held at the city. And then at the end of warranty, so we have a final at the project. One year after is our warranty. At the end of warranty, we would then look at that. What's remaining in the account would be returned to the developer, or if there were additional expenses paid, and it varies depending on the contractor, then we would ask for additional money to cover the costs that we've expended for that development. So...
And that's common with other cities as well, that part of it?
As far as, again, like I said, Mayor, it's a wide range. Some just say, give me two percent, and I'm not going to track anything. I just, maybe they have more data that says it takes us about two percent of the bond to do our inspection and testing services. We're saying we don't have enough data to do that, so we're projecting, we're going through the warranty period. We'll return it at the end of that period, and so they'll be, that'll be returned.
So it ends up being more of a precise cost, cost for the work done?
Yep. They'll get, they'll get, we'll have to submit an invoice to get that reimbursed, and they can get a copy of that. We just feel like we're short in being able to do this, and we feel like this is a way that's fair and equitable to the developers. They're only paying for the work that they require the city to do, and so that's why we're proposing this tonight.
Okay, questions for Marty?
Let me show one more thing on this, Mayor, and that is that these are the fees.
Rates?
The rates, sorry, that will be updated. And so those are the rates that we've established, and those are an all-inclusive rate for the time of each of those employees, and then we've got a GPS unit that will be out on the site, mapping stuff. We also have engineering consultants that we may decide are needed to be able to better evaluate whether or not it's acceptable, and then they would just be billed according to whatever those bills are.
Do you have any sense of what your administrative time and requirements will be to handle this? Will this add to your burden?
So I, what I did is Mario and I kind of worked through some numbers today, tried to estimate how much time. We expect that Ryan, our new city inspector, will spend about one hundred and ten percent of his time eventually, but right now about three-quarters of his time on development work. And so we've got about three-quarters of his time. We expect our engineers to spend probably six to eight hours a week, myself, one to two hours a week. Total, if you added that up, that according to this rate structure, that would be about a hundred thousand dollars that would be coming back to the city to pay for those services.
Seems like a real consulting approach, right? Per fifteen-minute type thing.
Yeah, I don't know how precise, if we can get down to that rate, but we will be very equitable in our timing and have ways that we're planning to do that.
Fifteen minutes and one second, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly. Billing in ten-minute increments. Okay, any questions for Marty? All right, let's open it up to the public. If anybody has a public comment on this, please come up and state your name.
Hi, I'm Corey Cloward. Some of you know me. I am a licensed civil engineer, and I won't work for those rates, but...
Would you like to be an inspector?
No, I have no interest. No, I'm going to stick with the water features that I'm used to designing. The proposal as presented is something that I would strongly urge this counsel to approve. There are a couple of things going on in this town, particularly the soil conditions that we find in this town with the nasty clay, the fact that things don't compact well, and history showing that this is a particularly tough geological formation to build in without having compaction issues and other inspection issues that happen. With regards to other political things happening in the city, we found that a lot of the damage to our roads is a result of improper compaction for all of the utility and infrastructure that got buried underneath. And that's turned into a huge financial burden for the city. To have proper inspections, and I would urge staff as they work with this, to be very diligent in performing proper inspections and never going in, looking at the hole and going, yeah, we're good, right? Those inspections need to be done properly, as they know, but sometimes we get in a hurry. Please don't get in a hurry.
Did you hear that, Marty?
Let's get this stuff done right because it's going to save the city thousands and thousands of dollars in the future. So counsel, I strongly, strongly urge you to approve this.
Thanks, Corey.
Marty, I think you just found your new best friend.
He'd be my neighbor. Anyone else?
Jacob Zantz, I just had a couple of concerns about it. First of all, I didn't realize, just from listening from last week when you talked about it, I didn't realize that Cedar Hills did it differently, and that they, it sounds like they contracted out or tell them that they have to go with a private company to do the inspections. Did I interpret that correctly? Okay, so I, you know, obviously, I'm usually in favor of privatizing things like that, you know, get the, get companies that can come in and do those things. My other concern was, I don't know how much work they do right now on inspections and things like that, but now we're going to be collecting a lot of, we're collecting new taxes for it, which means that now we're going to have a little bit of money in the general fund that won't be going towards inspections because now the businesses are paying for it one hundred percent, whereas before we were inspecting a little bit and not charging them anything. So just wondering where that money would go.
The impression I'm getting is the inspecting is not being done to the degree that, like even Corey just suggested. And that's why we've ended up with improper compaction or whatever. This would allow the existing staff as well as perhaps additional staff and/or if we had to hire on a peak season, you know, some consulting to come in and assist with that.
Okay, because my concern was we're collecting more taxes and yet, you know...
Yeah, it'd be more of a pay-as-you-go kind of thing, and that's why at the end of the warranty period, is that what you called it, any excess funds collected would be returned, which is something the other cities don't really do, yeah?
Yeah, so I was just concerned about the money that's being spent right now without doing this. Well, that's not going to be spent anymore because we're going to spend, well, at least...
I think you'll spend more than that, right?
Yeah, but after they get the fee. So the fee will pay for what they're doing now, whereas right now, what they're doing now is paid for through the general fund. Is that, am I making sense? Do I sound dumb? I feel dumb right now.
I think where you're headed is if that money isn't spent, if the money currently used out of the general fund is being allocated to that service and now we charge for it, can that excess money or that money not being charged be used for roads?
See, Mayor, you, look at you.
Am I, am I close?
You are awesome.
Thank you very much.
That was beautiful.
That was beautiful.
Well, and on top of that, we're not collecting it now, and we had a part-time inspector, and things were not being inspected. So not only were we not collecting it, but we were not, it wasn't happening.
Right.
So now we're collecting.
We would be if we passed this.
More professional services as opposed to a tax?
So let me clarify, and I don't want to shed any light that we weren't doing and...
No, no, I was not. That's why I said...
Clarence is doing an awesome job. What I'm saying is...
But he was part-time.
We are going to be at a higher level, and we're going to require more, and therefore it's going to take more time and effort than what we were doing previously. Now, Clarence used to be full-time back from two thousand, from ninety-four to two thousand and six, he was full-time here, and he was paid for out of the general fund full-time. Now, we don't have that full budget there, and it's not been there for a long time, eight years. And now we're talking about, we're going to need more to do what we feel is necessary to make sure we're getting good work done within our city. That's a huge liability for us.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else on the public hearing want to speak on this matter? Sorry, Tina?
I just wanted to make the counsel aware of a sort of a housekeeping note in the ordinance, and that is normally these fees would be included in our master fee schedule, which is adopted with the budget. Because we've hired this inspector and we would like to get moving right away, there's a section in the ordinance that makes these fees effective immediately, and so they will be charged. And then on May second, you will see an actual amendment to the master fee schedule. But between now and then, these fees will be effective.
So kicked in now and then retro to the fee schedule. Okay. Any other comments from the public?
Hello, Christopher Williams. I just happen to be an advocate for good roads, and if this makes our roads any better, then I'm for it.
Thank you. Okay, are we, are we safe to close the public hearing then? All right, we'll bring it back up here. Any further discussion?
I've gotten a lot of comments on this particular issue from people who do work in our city, and they have been shocked that we haven't done this sooner and are all for it from the public comments I've heard.
It's really surprising when you consider, sometimes we hear comments about fees in Pleasant Grove are too high, and then we find out that a common practice in pretty much all the other cities that we've looked at, we're not, we're not currently collecting. So, yeah, I agree. All right, if there's no further discussion, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, that we adopt ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty-four, amending section eleven dash fifteen inspection fee provisions of the Pleasant Grove City Code to add a provision assessing fees for testing and inspection of construction and development. The request includes a requirement for developers to prepay inspection costs, which will be placed into an escrow account and drawn upon as inspection costs are incurred by the city. Any overage or shortage of the escrow account will be coordinated with the developer. These inspection costs include project inspections, testing, GPS locating, and mapping, and we provide for an effective date.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana Lynn.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes.
Diana.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay, let's move back to item G, which is a public hearing to receive... Okay, let's move back to item G, which is a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed Pleasant Grove City Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget Amendment to reflect the actual and anticipated expenditures for land purchased at 399 South Locust Avenue in the amount of $278,500 with the funding source being Parks and Recreation Impact Fee. Denise?
I don't think there's much else to say. You did approve for the land purchase a couple of weeks ago. We'll be closing on Thursday and so we're just asking permission to appropriate the money so we can make that payment out of the Parks and Recreation Impact Fees. And we currently have that amount in fund balance in that fund.
Okay. It is a public hearing, so let's go ahead and open it up for the public. If there's any comments on this item, please come up and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and come back up here. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
We don't need a motion for this item.
Oh, just an action.
The next one, the next one.
Ah, the next one is the action item? Oh, that's right, it goes into the other one. Ready to vote. Can we take a bye over? All right, five minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Corey. They were good.
I want to thank everyone for accommodating us. Now we move to the second half of our agenda. Okay, we're in section 10, right? Section 10, item A. This is a consider for adoption, a resolution 2017-022, adjusting and amending the actual and anticipated expenditures for fiscal year 2016-17 for land purchase located at 399 South Locust Ave. In the amount of $278,500, with the funding source being parks and recreation impact fees, and providing for an effective date. I think we've had the presentation. Is there any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 2017-022, adjusting and amending the actual and anticipated expenditures for the fiscal year 2016-17 for land purchase located at 399 South Locust Avenue in the amount of $278,500, with the funding source being parks and recreation impact fees. And providing for an effective date.
I'll second. We have a motion by Diana and a second by Eric Lynn.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Diana.
Yes.
It carries. Okay, item B, to consider for adoption, a resolution 2017-023, authorizing the mayor to sign a development agreement with POC Development, Inc. for property located at approximately 900 West, 3100 North, to deed to the city 0.839 acres of property for the Manila Creek Park project, and providing for an effective date. Marty?
Mayor, over the last probably six months or so, the property directly below the Manila Creek Park and Pond has sold, the Alpine School District sold the property to development. We have three developers you've seen.
Can you cut that light?
You've seen the approval of the D.R. Horton piece of that development. And if you look at that, that's kind of this middle section. So I think it was a little over 40 acres of ground that was sitting here. The Ivory Homes is developing this piece, and that's been approved. D.R. Horton is developing this piece, and that's been approved. And now we have this kind of L-shaped piece here that is owned by POC LLC. That's Peck Ormsby Construction, probably, or something. They have purchased this piece of property, and we've been working with them. One of the issues is specifically on the boundary on the north. And the county data isn't always exactly right, but it's pretty close. And what you can see there is that the POC Development property actually encroaches into the park. Improvements were installed on their property. And at that time, it was Alpine School District property. And we had an understanding of a future potential park here. We would share access onto 900 West from that parking lot. There wasn't concerns. There also is a portion of the embankment of the reservoir that encroaches out into the property in this area. And then there's also a 20-inch irrigation water line. Our outlet structure for the pond is about in this location. And it comes down through here and kind of angles through this property. And so there was an understanding that this would develop differently. Now we're at a point where it's going to develop as single-family homes. And so we needed to address this boundary. As in our discussions with POC Development, we came up with a development agreement for the city to acquire this portion of the property to the fence line. So all of our existing improvements that have been installed, our access for the parking lot and the landscaping improvements and irrigation that has been installed could remain with the park. And so that's what this agreement is for. Essentially, I believe it says in your documents that it is .839 acres. And I need to clarify that. The portion that is in the agreement is .809, not .839. The 39 acres actually is coming out into the road. And it was clear that we wanted to separate this to .809 acres. So essentially... Get back over. Essentially, these are the two parcels owned here by the city. For the park, there's a small sliver along here that will help kind of just complete the park improvements. And then the rest of this would be developed currently. They are in for the next item, which is for the approval of a nine-lot subdivision, phase one of their development. And phase two will be the future development going down through the fields. This agreement includes some... What we're giving in order to get this property is that we've committed to not require them to submit water shares for their development in lieu of giving us the property. There are some calculations there that we've provided as part of this agreement. We can go over those if you would like. Let me go up just a little bit in your packet. There's also that 20-inch water line that goes out of the park, has to be relocated. And POC Development has agreed to relocate that into a line that will allow us a 20-foot wide easement on a side yard of a property as part of this development. So we've worked that into that. That's going to be their responsibility to relocate that 20-inch line as it comes out of the pond so it works with their development. And so those are the things that they are doing as deeding the property and relocating that line. What we're committing with this agreement to do is to... Essentially, we calculated about 4607 acre-feet of water that would be required typically with this project. We currently add a full-price value that's valued at $166,518.17. We've also have their first plat A subdivision, nine lots, what's in right now, that we're waiving that $1,900 of fees for in this agreement. So you add those two together, and that is the amount essentially that we're saying is the value of what we're getting for that property. And that is point, again, the point. Instead of .839, it's .809 acres of property for that amount, so.
Any questions for Marty? Seems fairly straightforward. Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Well, I think I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 2017-023, authorizing the mayor to sign a development agreement with POC Development for a property located at approximately 900 West, 3100 North, to deed to the city .809 acres of property for the Manila Creek Park project, and providing for an effective date.
I'll... Wait one second. We have a motion by Diana and a second by Lynn. Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries, it is approved. Item 10B, to consider for adoption, a resolution 2017-023. Did I sign, did I read that one?
Yes, we're on C.
Sorry. C, to consider for approval, a nine-lot final subdivision plat called Manila Park Estates Plat A on property located at 3100 North, 900 West, in the RR Zone.
This is the exact same property. It's the development of the first phase of their development, which is nine lots directly below the park. And you saw that in the previous exhibit. Essentially, the important thing here is they did get a variance from the planning commission with regards to lot size averaging of all the lots that border that park. So it is in the RR Zone. That requires 21,780 square foot per lot. Lots are allowed to be lot size average down to 17,424 square feet. And what they did here is because of that, the impact of taking that property away from the development, which would have allowed them to get all full-size lots. Essentially, they were approved for variance to reduce the lots that border that down to 17,424 square feet. So this development, you will see from their development plan that the lots that border this would be slightly less than the rest of the lots. They still have the ability, lot size average, the additional lots. In this case, I don't believe... Should go up to my map, it'll show better. Those lots are really close to the 17,424 that border the park. The ones that are away from that are meeting the half-acre lot according to their variance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions with regards to that. We don't know when the rest of the property will develop. That'll be at their, you know, they can come in for the next phases. We are accounting for their drainage, their connectivity, roads, all of that stuff in the other two developments to connect to this development. They have an overall vicinity plan that works well for this area. And so that's all in that plan.
Okay, questions for Marty?
Any concerns at the planning commission level about the variance?
None that I remember. There was, I mean, obviously, this was something that was somewhat imposed on them. The city was supportive of this variance in saying that we needed this property for a park, and therefore it justified, in our minds, a support of that variance request. And it was unanimous.
It was unanimous. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the nine-lot final subdivision called Manila Park Estates A, a property located at 3100 North, 900 West, the RR Rural Residential Zone.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Lynn and a second by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, to consider for approval, an extension of approval of the final plat for Palisades Plat G, formerly approved as Plat F, at approximately 640 South, 960 East. Ken?
Okay. Sharing devices here. Okay, so this particular plat is part of an overall series of plats that was approved previously in the Palisades subdivision that is currently under construction. It was part of the preliminary plat, Palisades Plat B. And then when it came forward to city council, it was Palisades Plats B through F that phased out the different final plats. Through the last year or so, we've had all of those plats, B through E, finalized and recorded. There were some final issues and concerns with this last plat. And so it had not yet been recorded. It has exceeded the timeframe for being approved, although the issues have been resolved and the plat has had very little, if any, changes to it in its original approval. So it's basically just getting an extension of approval. Now, what happened over time is as Plats B through E were brought forward and approved, well, or, and recorded, there was another plat to make a correction at the western end that was actually just a couple of months ago that the council approved as Plat F, because the previous Plat F had not yet been recorded. So we are now having to change the letter on this to Plat G. So that's, there was a bit of confusion there as to whether this was Plat F or Plat G. But it has been now changed to Plat G. So, but it is the same plat previously approved as Plat F. So we're, the planning commission has had a previous preliminary approval, including this. Staff is recommending approval for the extension.
So it's a one-year extension?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Ken?
Are there any costs for us as a city when there are extensions, when people don't record in the timeframe originally anticipated?
I don't think there's a lot. I mean, of course, the reasoning for why it's needing to be extended is because there are some outstanding issues that need to be resolved. So it may take a little bit more staff time and review. But as far as other city costs, it'd be very minimal, if any.
So this is Hatfield Homes, correct, the developer?
No, it's...
No?
Artisan, yes. Jared Bishop.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve an extension of approval for the final plat for Palisades Plat G, formerly approved as Plat F, at approximately 640 South, 960 East in the Scratch Gravel neighborhood.
We have a motion by Ben and a second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, item E is to consider for adoption, a resolution 2017-024, accepting the municipal wastewater planning program self-assessment report for the 2016 calendar year, and providing for an effective date.
Every year, we're required, and because we do provide a sewer service to our citizens, we're required to do a report. And this year, our report, as in past years, has been really... It's really nice that we don't have any infractions with regards to sewer overflows, which means, doesn't necessarily mean that nobody's ever had a plugged lateral or something. It means that in a mainline situation, we haven't had a plugged mainline this last year that caused a significant sewer overflow to any residential home. And so that's, that is a very positive thing. We currently have, if you kind of go through the report, some of the things that are highlighted there. We currently have three of our employees that are certified operators, level four operators. And that's also required that we have at least one that's a certified operator for the sewer system. The other items, if you're interested, we just had a few new residential, 304, I believe, residential connections made this last year. I'm happy to field any other questions that you might have about the report that you received. It's pretty straightforward, and we got zero points, which is very good.
Which is a good thing.
The lower the better.
That's right.
Okay. Questions for Marty?
Oh, I'd love to make some jokes about some self-assessing sewer.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and call for a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, that we adopt resolution 2017-024, accepting the municipal wastewater planning program self-assessment report for the 2016 calendar year, noting that we got zero points, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Eric Lynn.
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay, item F, to consider for adoption, a resolution 2017-025, authorizing the mayor to declare six cell phones, a Planar monitor, model number, a Gateway 2000 Solo 2300 computer, a Windows XP Professional HP computer, and a 2010 Ford Explorer as surplus, and direct that they be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of surplus property and providing for an effective date.
I'll do the cell phones.
You got elected, huh?
Just for the cell phones. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say on the other items, but the cell phones, we've actually had a couple more that are turned in. So we actually need to change that from six to 10 cell phones that are being surplus. What we do with those is, once they're surplus, then we've got a cost to do that, about $50 apiece, that we'll either sell them or we'll dispose of them as, per the policy of the city, so. But right now, we would like to change that from six to 10 cell phones so that we can get rid of all the ones that we have available right now.
Denise, you want to cover the computers?
It's actually community development.
Okay, Ken?
So just had some leftovers after upgrading. They've been sitting around for a few years, and we decided to clear off our storage shelves.
Okay. And the truck.
The vehicle is the police department's, and we just need to rotate it out of the fleet to provide for new vehicles.
Okay. Any questions for the staff?
I've got a quick one. I'm curious what model the cell phones are. And I'm also curious why we are so specific on the monitor model number, and we're not specific at all when it comes to cell phones.
I don't know. I know what the cell phones are. I mean, they're all of our cell phones in the public works. Most of them Galaxy S5s. One of them, I believe, is an iPhone S5, or two of them. And what, so you need to understand that these guys are out in the trenches, working. And what we see is valuable for us is that when they're out there working, these things get damaged. We've had battery problems. And it just takes a lot of time to manage those. So we probably turn them over a lot more than your typical cellphone user, because we're out. These are on their hips everywhere they go. And they're getting bumped and scratched. And so these were all from our water department, and they just rotated through. And then we will try to get a little bit of the money back to reimburse that. But it's something that we feel is very necessary to keep being able to communicate, as well as not have problems and have to deal with them ongoing for batteries and other things like that.
Thanks.
The S8 comes out on Friday, just in case you want to know.
Just so you know.
All right, any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we adopt resolution 2017-25, authorizing the mayor to declare now 10 cell phones, a Planar monitor, PL1910MW, a Gateway 2000 Solo 2300 computer, a Windows XP Professional HP computer, and a 2010 Ford Explorer as surplus, and directing that they be disposed of in accordance with the city's disposition policy for surplus property and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Eric, by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay, item G, to consider for adoption, a resolution 2017-026, authorizing the mayor enter into an inter... Into an interlocal agreement between Pleasant Grove City and Linden City for shared utility services along common boundaries, and providing for an effective date.
This agreement has been in the works for many years, as I understand it, and finally coming to fruition of getting approval. It was approved by Linden City Council back in March, last month. And this is now coming to you to get approval. In short, the agreement, essentially, we have shared utilities along 1000 South. This would be nice to do in other cities that we have boundaries with, but we can't seem to work that out. But in this city with Linden, they've been great to work with. Essentially, we have agreements that you'll see the maps that are part of your packet that shows whether or not we're providing service or they're providing service. Just a quick example, 1000 South that was just extended up from Locust Avenue. Linden City is currently providing the sewer and water in that street. Pleasant Grove is currently providing the pressure irrigation and storm drain in that street. And so it's a shared agreement. And the information's in there with regards to how we bill the residents that are along that street, whether or not, if it's our service, then we'll bill them for the service that we provide them, and vice versa. If our residents are getting service from Linden, they'll be, they'll receive a bill from Linden for those services. So pretty straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the agreement.
Questions for Marty? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion for adoption of resolution 2017-026, authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement between Pleasant Grove City and Linden City for shared utility services along common boundaries, and providing for effective date.
I'll second it.
Motion by Eric, second by Diana, by voice. Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
I need to do a similar one with Cedar Hills. Can we do that?
That's the goal.
Well, the one with Linden only took about a decade.
Meeting that you set up.
I think we could do that. Okay. Item H, to consider awarding the Walker Tank and Pump Station project bid in the amount of $2,027,300 to Dry Creek Structures LLC, and authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement, the agreement and notice to proceed upon receipt of the approval of the final contract documents.
We are finally here on this one. We've been talking about it for months, and the bids have come back in last week, and we've evaluated those. On this one, the thing that we need to discuss is about the cover on the tank. And what we are recommending is to do a concrete lid on the tank now. So as part of the project, we wanted to see what it would cost us to do a concrete lid. So we did a design of the lid, and we bid it so we would know exactly what that cost would be. We've got estimates of what it would cost to put the other covers that we've discussed on them on the tank as well. If you remember those costs, the cost for kind of the polytarp cover, tent-looking type cover, was about $100,000. The, there was an aluminum cover one that was in the $350,000 to $400,000. And as we were looking at it before, we expected the concrete lid to be about $400,000 as well. What it came in as, and you'd have to read through the bid tab, but essentially $246,000 is what it is to put a lid on that. Now, there are benefits for us by having a concrete lid, because we can do the fill on the site differently. Two things, you'll notice in the bid tab, there's a $90,000 retaining wall that's shown that was bid in order to get the tent-looking lid on that. We have to build a $90,000 retaining wall to keep the dirt far enough away from the tank to be able to put that on and maintain it. With a concrete lid, then we can take and get rid of a majority. I can't say that we would get rid of all of that, but a good portion of that would be removed so that we wouldn't have to construct such a large structure, which will decrease that $246,000. I'm expecting below $200,000. Plus, there's some additional earthwork that we can change, because we were planning to haul that off. Now we can keep more of that on-site, and less earthwork would have to be done on the project. What's being awarded tonight, just for clarity, is the tank with the concrete lid. The grading and the cost of that retaining wall will be negotiated with the contractor and be reduced from the amount that's being awarded tonight. If that work doesn't get completed, then we wouldn't pay them for that work. And so...
Go ahead. Okay, I'm just, this is like exciting.
Go ahead.
Just shocked. When is it that you get excited over a cement cover on a water tank? But have you notified the residents?
No, we don't dare.
Well, no, I thought that they, I thought that they wanted it, right?
Mr. Spokesman is right back there.
So I ran into him at soccer on Saturday. And he promised that he wouldn't tell the world. No, we have not gotten to that point yet.
But that was kind of the first choice for the residents, correct?
Yeah, I think that was a preference.
With, and it will still have the fence around the tank? All right, go.
So all of that still needs to be discussed, and we need to finish the grading plan. All we did is the site, kind of conceptual... kind of conceptual grading, and the tank construction, the pump station construction. Now, what we need to focus on is final grading, landscaping. How all of that's going to happen is still a forthcoming item.
But there's, because, going back just to the cover for a second, the fencing around it, there is going to be an issue with like a steep drop-off off the tank, correct? So, I mean, there'll be...
Going to be that.
Right, and then we'll solve that with some sort of fencing.
But on the back, the, right.
Right.
So, I, I don't know that we're changing the over, we don't know yet what our final fencing, what the thing will look like exactly with this revised concept. But we'll, we'll work with everybody on that, try to come up with something that's reasonable, acceptable, and, and feasible.
But this seems like it solves somewhat of the concerns of aesthetics, and then also usability and safety that, I mean, this is, I love making progress.
So, I do have a question on how are you, how, how does maintenance work on this, then?
So, very similar to what we were proposing with the other type of lid covers. They would have, we would have to have an access hatch.
Okay.
So, we'll form in lid an access hatch that we will do very similar to what was being proposed before, just with the concrete lid, and we have different options for grading.
Okay.
The concrete lid, it doesn't actually lift itself. The, the whole lid doesn't lift somehow.
No, we go out and lift it together.
There will be columns. There'll be columns in the tank that hold the concrete lid suspended lid up.
Okay.
Right, so it'll be just totally covered.
Do we know what?
Like many of our culinary tanks.
Do we know what the weight is that it will support?
So, that is still under negotiations right now. It's only planned for about six inches of material over. That's how it was bid. So, as we're looking through and trying to come up with that, we can thicken that section. Obviously, would come at a cost. So, that's what our evaluation is. What the good thing is, is that we wanted to see what the alternative would provide, so that we could include it as a, as an alternative in our research and figuring out how to get this done right. And so, I think we now have a firm price. Everything we're seeing points to this makes sense, and we'll finalize that with the final grading plan, which you guys will be made aware of.
Other questions?
But it sounds like in the long run, even with the other factors, we're still saving money by going this route at this point.
So, so what we're going to be saving on is long-term maintenance and replacement of a, you know, a concrete lid is long, long-term, right?
Right.
Compared to a, a tarp might have a twenty to twenty-five-year life that would have to be replaced, different maintenance. So, i-if you're looking at it, the cost between a hundred thousand and four hundred, it didn't make sense to us to recommend a four hundred thousand dollar expense. Right now, we're recommending about a two hundred thousand dollar expense, and it does make a lot of sense for us to recommend that.
Other discussion?
No, and who knew that there was a company that actually has thirty years of experience in water storage tanks?
There's a lot of them, actually.
Actually, here in, yeah, in our valley. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we can pump station project bid in the amount of $2,027,300 to Dry Creek Structures LLC, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and notice to proceed upon receipt and approval of final contract documents.
Second. We have a motion by Sid, a second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Okay, item I is to consider awarding the 900 South Street Improvement Project bid in the amount of $1,087,480 to Cody Ecker Construction, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and notice to proceed upon receipt and approval of final contract documents.
So, we, um, we've talked about kind of the main projects that are going forward, the Blackhawk Estates Waterline Project, the 900 South Project, and right now, the 700 South Project. They all have a utility component to them and a street component to them. This is the utility component of the 900 South Project. It's the installation of a sewer line, upsizing that sewer line, and a new water main up that street from Locust Avenue up to 1150 East. Cody Ecker, we actually only received two bids, which was a little bit surprising to us. We had eight or nine attend the pre, the pre-bid meeting, and only two submitted bids on it. However, it was still ten percent below the engineer's opinion of cost on the project, which was great. We feel like we got a great bid on the project. We've worked with Cody Ecker in the past. He did our Center Street Waterline Project last year, and feel like we can work well with him, and are excited to get this project going, so.
Questions? All right, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we award the 900 South Street Improvement Project bid in the amount of $1,087,480 to Coder, Cody Ecker Construction, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and notice to proceed upon receipt and approval of final contract documents.
I'll second the motion. Motion by Diana, second by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, item J. To consider awarding the 700 South Utility Improvement Project bid in the amount of $555,852 to Newman Construction, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and notice to proceed upon receipt and approval of final contract documents.
This is a 700 South Project. Two bidders, two different bidders, which was surprising to us as well. And Newman Construction worked on the Garden Drive Project this last year. Great, did a great job for us, and we were impressed with their work. And, and so, we recommend this to move forward as well.
Questions? Discussion?
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
So, this is, again, one of our coordinated utility projects. And if you imagine, if we just did this project alone, we would be coming back in there and paving a coronary waterline patch all the way down this road from State Street to 490 West. What we're doing is, is we're not going to be paving that section back. They will be constructing the line, and right on the hills of that, we'll have the util, the pavement contractor coordinated, so he's coming right in and doing the roadway construction right on top of that. And I think it's a great benefit that we're doing this. So, as you look at our coordinated road planning and things of that nature, in the end, we're all now sharing some of the utility costs for the pavement. Will be, you know, saving us a little bit of doing the road work. And so, that's, that's very evident in all of these projects that we're talking about. That sharing of getting the roads improved is, is very critical.
Good.
Sam White's Lane. Fun.
Okay, any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we award 700 South Utility Improvement Project in the amount of $555,852 to Newman Construction, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and notice to proceed upon receipt and approval of final contract documents. I'm trying to hurry, the jaws are playing. And I'm a Fairweather fan, so I'm tuning in, so. I'm watching yours, so I'd like to...
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Sid and a second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item K. To consider awarding the fiscal year 2016-17 Street Improvement Project bid in the amount of $1,152,777.60 to Geneva Rock Products, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and notice to proceed upon receipt of final contract documents.
Mayor, this is for the paving of Blackhawk Estates, 900 South and 700 South Projects, as well as all of the construction work that goes with getting them ready to pave the underground, the milling of the pavement, and those types of things. And another thing that I, I'm glad we did this. We separated the utilities and the road work. We got a huge utility project. I think it's evident in the pricing that we got. We got a lower cost because we were able to do that. It was a little bit tricky, coordinating between different consultants and things of that nature, but we feel like we got a great bid on this project, looking at how they came out, so.
Questions for Marty?
Uh, this is kind of a complicated one, Marty, but you're probably familiar with yesterday, an extra bit of work associated with the Blackhawk Project that wasn't necessarily anticipated, that may have done some significant road damage to an adjacent road. Are you familiar with this?
I am.
Uh, is this going to be able to cover some rehabilitory work, or is that going to be?
We'll definitely look at it. It's pretty close to the limits of our project, right? It's just up that road a hundred feet. So, we're going to have to evaluate. The roads are already in very bad condition, which we know. The question is, is whether or not we want to extend the waterline a little bit further, because we've had a couple of leaks in that section already, and we've already had another one yesterday. And so, we're evaluating whether or not we add that, but that would affect the overall, maybe a change order coming to extend a little bit of that pavement and get that done. Again, that was yesterday, and, and we haven't even started. So, we'll, we'll address that as it comes with the project.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion, Mayor, that we, uh, let's see, this is K that we're on now. Approve, or award the fiscal year 2016-17 Street Improvement Project bid in the amount of $1,152,777.60 to Geneva Rock Products, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and notice to proceed upon receipt and approval of final contract documents.
Second. We have a motion by Ben and a second by Eric. We have a motion by Ben and a second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Uh, item L is to consider for approval a proclamation declaring April twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen as Arbor Day. Thanks, Marty.
Yes.
What was that, like ten billion dollars right there?
Not quite.
So, Mayor and Council, this is the proclamation for our annual Arbor Day tree planting celebration, which will hold at the Valley Vista Trail, um, on the twenty-ninth of April at eight AM. In conjunction with this, we're also doing the Trail Day, uh, maintenance project. We're anticipating about two-hundred people, so it should be a pretty big event.
That's gonna be the volunteer effort? And then the park opening, the trail opening is...
Is May sixth.
May sixth, so like, is that a week?
Couple of weeks after.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah. Well, actually, I think it is the week after, yeah.
Okay.
Too many weeks ahead.
Okay. Proclamation Arbor Day, two, April twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, whereas Arbor Day is observed through, throughout the nation, and whereas trees provide beauty to the community, and whereas trees provide valuable shade from the hot summer sun, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of topsoil and produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are valuable in purifying the air and Utah's arid climate, and whereas having beautiful trees planted in the community is an important matter to the citizens, and whereas the, the city named Pleasant Grove, the city was named Pleasant Grove because of a beautiful grove of trees that reflects the appreciation our forefathers had for them, and whereas Pleasant Grove, as Utah's cities of, city of trees, continues to be characterized by the scenic landscape that trees provide, now therefore I am Michael W. Daniels, Mayor of Pleasant Grove City, on behalf of the city council do hereby proclaim that the citizens of Pleasant Grove observe April twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen as Arbor Day by joining the Beautification Commission in the Valley Vista Trail, six oh nine east, eleven hundred north, Wade Springs Trailhead, at eight AM for tree planting ceremony, and further urge everyone to plant a tree. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion for approval of proclamation declaring April twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen as Arbor Day.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Eric, a second by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, item M is to consider for adoption a resolution, two thousand seventeen dash zero-two-seven, authorizing the Pleasant Grove City Parks and Recreation Director to submit application for the two thousand seventeen Utah County Commission Municipal Recreation Grant for improvements to be made to the Veterans Memorial Pool and providing for an effective date.
Yeah, so a couple of things we've had on the list due for a couple of years is to add amendees to encourage people to come to the pool. Um, as you're aware, most of the other pools around us have a lot of water features and play structures that they can, they can, uh, utilize. So, we've looked at a couple of options. One is a wee bit, which is a floating removable divi-, uh, playground. It's air, basically. They kind of just jump on it and jump from pad to pad, basically. Uh, another thing is a climbing wall that would be, we would replace one of, uh, or, sorry, we would remove one of our diving boards. They really don't get used a lot, and in the deep end, we would install this climbing wall. The other thing we need to do is, um, actually this last week, we took down one of our trees that was growing up through the slide and actually doing damage to the slide. And so, we, this has also been on this, but it would be shade covers for waiting in line as you go up the slide. Uh, and then what additional money we had left, we would purchase, uh, picnic tables, which are in great need up there.
So, at this point, it's applying for the grant?
This, yeah, this is just you giving permission to apply for the grant.
And this is the annual twenty thousand from the...
Yeah.
And does this have to be on new purchases only?
Yes, it can be used for maintenance necessarily, yeah.
Did it die?
Hello?
Hey, D O., you got...
Any other questions?
You've got my standing approval for any grant pursuits you want to pursue.
You want to turn that into a motion?
Mayor, I make the motion that we give authorization to, uh, well, I guess we'll have to do, adopt it by resolution, two thousand seventeen dash two-seven, authorizing Pleasant Grove City Parks and Recreation Director to submit application for the two thousand seventeen Utah County Commission Municipal Recreation Grant and improvements to be made to the Veterans Memorial Pool and providing for an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Ben and a second by Eric. Lynn?
Yeah.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries. It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item N, to consider for re-adoption, ordinance two thousand seventeen dashes six, Pleasant Grove City boundaries by annexing a portion of parcel, a portion of a parcel, zero-point-one-nine-four acres designated in the annexation policy plan on property located approximately eight ninety-nine east, eleven ninety north, in the R-one-nine single-family zone. Tina?
Mayor and Council, this ordinance has already been previously approved. That's why it says re-adopt. The state statute requires us to be able to submit, uh, the plat for the annexation within thirty days to the county, because at the time we took action approving the ordinance and the annexation, the property owner didn't have the plat completely ready, and it took him a while to do that. When it was time to submit it to the county, the county declined it because we didn't meet the thirty-day, um, deadline. So, we're asking you to re-adopt it, so that turns, takes the time clock and starts it back over at zero. Kathy now has the plat, my understanding is, ready to go, and so we'll just resubmit it.
Okay. Questions for Tina? Discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion, Mayor, that we re-adopt ordinance two thousand seventeen dash six, amending Pleasant Grove City boundaries by annexing a portion of a parcel, point-one-nine-four acres designated in the annexation policy plan on property located approximately eight ninety-nine east, eleven ninety north, in the R-one-nine single-family residential zone.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana. Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we have completed the action items, and now we're on to section eleven, item A, discussion and possible action on road funding. Uh, who's gonna lead out on this?
That was me.
You want to try? Okay, go for it.
I asked to put this on the agenda. Uh, Mayor, based on the discussion that we had last week, I would like to work simultaneously with getting a public hearing going for two of the proposals, both on the low end and high end of funding the roads, and I'd like to propose a couple of dates. Um, again, while working simultaneously with your proposal of going through the budget again, and I think this is something we should do on a regular basis, is going through the budget, which we do, um, but even a higher level of scrutiny.
Okay.
And I would like to propose that next week, we don't have a city council meeting, but that we dedicate that meeting to, uh, if this gives staff enough time, and with Scott being here, I don't know if that's possible, um, bringing back the high-level look at their, or at least a couple of their departmental budgets, and then looking at May twenty-third or the thirtieth for a public hearing.
Based on the options that we've previously reviewed with the low end and high end and getting feedback from the public, that may entail more public hearings based on the feedback, but at least it gives us a starting point as well as continuing to review the budget. But I think we need to move forward in that, and, uh, Councilmember Stanley said a few weeks ago that, I think it was, was it around six thousand dollars a day, Ben, that you said that we, it's costing us by not moving forward with the roads. So, that concerns me, and I'd like to move forward the simultaneous.
So, let me make sure I'm following you. You want to get the process starting and engaging the public for feedback?
Correct.
On different road proposals?
Correct.
Not, not we're actually gonna go and propose an ordinance at this time?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Council, what do you think?
Got some questions for staff. Maybe Tina can speak to this, but if we do a proposal or multiple proposals, do we send out mailed notice like we did last year to the whole city about what the two proposals are? Is that how that would...
Could you use your little "if it works"? Grab the other one.
So, mailing it out to every citizen is kind of over and above what's required. If the council would like us to do that, then we certainly can. Um, I know there's a cost attached to that. I think it's three or four thousand dollars it cost us to mail things out. Kathy, does that sound? So, it'd be about three or four thousand dollars in cost to mail out something to every resident. Normally, for a public hearing, we would just notice it in our, in our normal fashion. It would be on the website. It would be posted in three public places, um, and social media pages. So, I, normally, that's what we would do.
Last year's was anomalous, what we did?
Yes, we wanted the extra input. We wanted the extra notice, and so council asked us to do that, and we did it. And, and we can do it again. I'm just advising you that there is a cost to it, and if it's just a discussion and there's, it might not be cost-effective to mail something to every house.
So, let me ask for clarification. Are we also asking for that middle-tier analysis to be done as well?
I think...
Was that part of this?
I think a, a low, middle, high.
So, that we have a low, middle, high, lay it out there, and just get feedback at this point? Where, where is the public at with this?
If we even want to put an online survey at, and do the three options as it's noticed to the public, some, you know, put it online, we can do that as well. But I think, I'd like to see a starting point in us moving forward with some of the options that we've discussed, and then, as I said, work simultaneously with taking a higher-level look at the budget. I know, like I said, we don't have a city council meeting scheduled for next, like the schedule one, but at least starting with a couple of the departments.
I don't know, it's okay.
Anyway, I want to get feedback from the council, so we can show that we're taking continued action on the roads, and, and I think this would be a good place to start.
Okay.
If, if I could speak for Scott?
Please.
I think next week would probably not be good. Yeah, I think the May second would probably be the best, right?
So, May second for the, for the presentation from staff on the third option with a possible May ninth or May sixteenth, uh, public hearing for feedback?
When you said third option, what are you?
Uh, the middle tier, the low, middle, high. The middle one is the one that's not there.
So, yeah, on May second, at least hearing from a couple of departments that he's been working with.
Right, that's what, I have that down for him.
Okay.
It's May second, you want him to start doing the, the budget review?
Correct.
On at least a few departments.
Correct.
And then I have on May sixteenth, you would like to have a public hearing to present the, the low, middle, high options and have a discussion and input from the public on those.
Is there a way we can do May ninth to discuss as a council the specific options that we want to put out to the public?
Yes.
Believe that's a work session, so, yeah, you can put that on the work session agenda.
And then I'm fine with, I mean, if that's even moving too fast to do the twenty-third or thirtieth of May to have the public hearing. I just want to make sure we have the information and we're all on the same page before we present to the public. But, so possibly the twenty-third of May for a public hearing to gather feedback on the three tiers.
Okay. I'll ta-, I'll talk to Scott tomorrow and see what works in terms of noticing and timing.
Okay.
Kathy?
So, probably no.
How about if we shoot for the sixteenth?
Okay.
And then if we miss the sixteenth?
We'll go for the thirtieth.
We go for the, whatever the next available date is.
Or even discuss and see if it's on the agenda with the planning commission. It might be an interesting one for them to be a part of, but, yeah, we'll shoot for the sixteenth.
Okay. All right, so that would be then, as I understood it, uh, on the second, we would have a presentation from Denise and Scott on the outline on the study of the different departmental budgets at the high level, on how we were gonna proceed. We would also have information either on the second or the ninth as to the three options that will be presented. We blessed those, and then we'd try to get them out in time for a May sixteenth public hearing, or a May twenty-third, or a May thirtieth, right? Okay, all right, so that's, that's what I'm hearing. Council, what's your...
And Mayor, for the, this isn't the ordinance we're proposing. This is just to gather feedback for a starting point.
Right. This is just, this is just to get the ball rolling.
See if we're out in space, see if, I mean, just find out where we're at with the public.
I guess from my perspective, if I could share a few thoughts, um, we've, we've had a couple of years of input and feedback on different numbers. I mean, if the question becomes what's the ultimate number, the budgeting exercise has to happen before we have a number to talk about. Um, I'm, I'm curious, and maybe Tina, you can speak to this. It's too bad Scott's not here, but we got an email from a resident last night that wanted us to reassess the fee structure entirely and make it about number of vehicles that a person owns rather than, rather than number of trips, and, and that businesses would be assessed based on their parking stalls. And, uh, one of the councils suggested that the majority of the council shared that line of thinking. It was news to me, but, um, but my understanding is that the, the assessment hasn't been looked at that way, and I'm, I'm curious. It's not a bad idea to explore, and I'm interested in, in finding out if that's something that we could look into, or if we could assess it that way based on number of vehicles owned by individuals. Is there a reason we didn't approach it that way in the past? Is there a, a way to do that kind of assessment?
Um, I don't know that I can answer your question fully on this spur of the moment, but the reason why it hasn't been considered in the past is because we're going at it on a user-fee basis, and traditionally, the studies that have been done have been done on the trips per day. I don't know of any reason why we couldn't look at the other option and, and see whether it fits in the user-fee analysis, so that if it was challenged, um, it would be legally, um, upheld. Uh, whatever we do, if we're going to be saying it's a user-fee, we need to be able to tie it pretty tightly to actual statistics, and, um, I don't know that any other city has, has approached it in that manner, and so I think we need to do a little bit of research and see if that's something that, that could be done.
It'd be something worth looking into, I think, as we, as we prepare for further conversations about the best way to approach various possible proposals to the public. That's, that was one that came from a resident last night that seemed interesting and, and potentially related to use. I mean, the number of vehicles you own is some kind of a measure of use of the road, so.
Whether or not it would stand up to a scientific challenge is...
Okay, I hear you, Tina, sorry.
Whether or not it would stand up to a challenge is in terms of having scientific data, that, that would be my question. I'm not saying it couldn't, I'm just saying nobody's ever looked at it.
That's a valid point. Whenever we talk about these things, we need to tie it back to something.
Right.
Okay. Uh, any other comments?
Let's get moving forward. Let's go.
All right with that?
Yes.
Good. Okay, so let's set that as a tentative direction, then. We will have a presentation from, uh, staff next week. Did I get that right?
Not next week.
Not next week, the second. Uh, on the second, about the low, middle, and high options, and then a discussion on the ninth to decide what it is we're gonna present to the public, shooting for the sixteenth on a public hearing to gather feedback and explore some of these other options, like how do you actually come up with a user-fee that people, um, can, can see as reasonable, fair, and specific to usage. And then we'll proceed forward on the budget reviews, um, uh, a little by little each week until we get them through, and hopefully we bring these things together in, in a few months, and we're ready to go.
I could add something, Mayor. It might also behoove us to incorporate in a discussion at the same time about a property tax fee or a fee related to services, because it looks like a lot of the public would like to see us fully fund roads or minimally fund roads, and then look at fees for possible services.
I, I think, I think that, um, on the road discussion part, um, we can just put it to the council and ask if they'd like to go ahead and have that discussion as well, because that would tie in with, let's say, the initiative passes in the election, and you want to go to, uh, funding the roads thing. How would the citizens feel about that? Is that something that you would like to discuss and tackle at this time, Council?
A tax to raise other services?
Right. In other words, like, what I'm understanding Councilman Stanley to say is, um, it's kind of the unspoken thing, like if the initiative were to pass, then you're facing the other, the other, um, side of the shoe dropping, which is now you've moved two-point-six million out of general fund. Where do you come up with this two-point-six million to fund the, uh, the services that would be affected? And one possibility would be, what about a, a fee or a tax or something like that to cover it? Um, do you want to think about that one, and we can discuss that at our next meeting?
Well, I think definitely the initiative, if they, if the signatures happen and it gets on the ballot, that's going to have to be a discussion the public is aware of, so they know when they go to the ballot what they're going to be paying for the loss of services. So, I, I think it's a discussion. I don't know about it this time, but as we move closer and find out what happens with the initiative, that we'll definitely have to have if it makes on the ballot.
It's just a continuation of what our, our, uh, project we did because of the initiative, and so it would give, uh, I think it would give the citizens, uh, it'd open their eyes to what they actually signed, um, because I think they're not getting the full story when they were approached at the door. So, so I think it'd be a great experience for them.
Good opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
Others?
Um, I'm okay talking about it. I, um, my, my gut feeling is I'd like to just wait and see what happens with the, the vote.
Okay. Lynn? Okay, and I, I think we know where you stand. So, so I'm gonna just throw out there that let's, uh, let's get some feedback on what the county tells us, and assuming that we're moving forward in that direction, let's go ahead and pencil that in for another one of the options that we should be looking at.
I think that's great. Thanks.
All right, any other discussion on this item? Did we miss anything? All right, let's go on to the agenda for May second. I haven't seen that one since Halloween. That's good.
Blinding.
All right, so on May second, we're down to public hearings, nine A. Um, we have one here for an ordinance, two thousand seventeen twenty-one, and this is amending the general plan use map for one-point-six-seven acres at seventeen-eighty-three west, eleven hundred north, from medium-density residential to professional mixed-use. Ken, is this you?
Yes, um, so, uh, we have a proposed, uh, ninety-one-unit senior assisted living project that, uh, would like to go in, uh, this location, which is close to North County Boulevard on eleven hundred north. It is, um, most of the property that they're wanting to develop on is currently general planned to allow for professional offices. There's one small portion of the property on the east side that does not have that general plan designation, and it is zoned currently R-one-eight. So, they are seeking to include that piece in with the others in the general plan designation area for, that would allow for professional offices, uh, which in this particular zone also allows for medical offices and such, uh, and, uh, larger facilities for assisted living. Uh, the, the next item with that is a re-zone of, of all of those properties from R-one-eight to, uh, professional offices, uh, for that specific purpose. Again, uh, the re-zone is permitted, uh, by the general plan on all except for one small eastern portion of that property.
So, Ken, can I just say that A and B, again, appear to be somewhat duplicated? I don't see re-zone in the second item. Am I missing something?
Yeah, I think, uh, we...
Is it a cop and paste? Okay.
Well...
We can fix that by then, but the purpose would be discuss the land use and then go into the re-zone.
Right.
Okay. And how far along is that with Planning Commission?
Uh, it, it has, uh, let's see, yeah, it's, it's been to Planning, Planning Commission in the last meeting, and, uh, it, uh, received recommendation for approval, so...
Okay. Well, that'll be interesting to hear, then.
Is that a vacant now?
Yes, properties are undeveloped.
Okay.
So, it's about seven acres, so you drive down there on eleven hundred north, and you can just look over and see a big vacant field there.
Okay, the next one is to consider for adoption an ordinance, and we don't yet have the ordinance number. Is that right? To amend the city code by adding section ten fifteen forty-eight mobile food trucks, um, blah, 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 blah. So, Ken, what do you want to say on that one?
Okay, so we've been working on a proposal to have an ordinance for food trucks for quite some time. Uh, some of you may have been contacted by, uh, the applicant. So, on this, we have dual applicants. The city has been coming forward with our own proposal of creating a, an ordinance to regulate food trucks, um, working with or communicating with, uh, the, uh, applicants who represent to the Boston food truck, Boston, I can't remember the name of it exactly, but...
Taste of Boston.
Taste of Boston, that have been located on the corner of, uh, State Street in Maine in front of, uh, the Allred's Development there, adjacent to the pizza place. Um, so, we, we have felt that there's been some non-compliance as far as their existing structures, and, uh, wanted to get some temporary nature into what, uh, they have been doing, uh, because food trucks by nature are temporary. Uh, it's a truck, it has wheels, it's not permanent, and so, but what they have wanted to do is to stay there permanently, or at least, uh, almost, uh, the, the year round, uh, and get approval for that. And so, they will be coming forward seeking an opportunity to discuss that with you. We will have two proposals to put in front of you. One is the staff's proposal for regulating the ordinance. The second is their take on our ordinance, so the same format, a lot of the same verbiage, but changing certain sections out that, uh, would allow them to have a more permanent status in that area. Our, our biggest objection from a, uh, staff standpoint is that, uh, a permanent restaurant should, uh, have all of the same requirements as a brick-and-mortar restaurant, which is to provide, uh, site improvements such as parking and landscaping and those type of things, that, uh, if we allow food trucks to stay permanently in one location without having those, uh, types of, uh, regulations then, or requirements, then they are, um, not playing the game the same as brick-and-mortar restaurants, and might appear to have, uh, more perks or benefits that are not enjoyed by the others. So, that, we're just trying to, uh, create a, a good regulating ordinance for food trucks. And so, again, you will see two proposals, one the city's, one the applicant's.
Okay.
Quick question, if I may, Mayor. Um, one thing that would, maybe it's more a comment than a question, but one thing that would be helpful for me is that, uh, is to understand a little bit of the history. I think the legislature addressed food trucks a little bit this session, and, uh, also, the, um, we've had food trucks in the past in Pleasant Grove City, and they've been organized without an ordinance in place, so we don't need that tonight, although if you got some thoughts on them, I'm happy to hear them, but by, by the time that we address this, I'd love to hear that kind of information.
Uh, well, I can briefly answer some of that. Uh, we have typically, even though we didn't have a specific food truck ordinance, we've treated them as mobile food vendors, and we do have an ordinance that regulates that type of use. Um, mostly, those are like ice cream trucks and those types of things, so we had to make a few modifications, but that's what we were licensing them under prior to this. The, um, legislature, the two main, uh, state statutes that came down, one was, uh, regarding the fact that they were, food trucks go to all different cities in the state, and different cities had different regulations and fees and permitting processes. So, the state requires us now to accept a business license for a food truck from any other city in the state if it's been validly issued, so they don't have to worry about going to different cities and trying to figure out what's your requirements and what's your requirements. Um, that's basically it. They were just trying to level the playing field. The state also, uh, made it illegal to establish buffer zones, uh, for food trucks in, in proximity to bricks-and-mortar restaurants. Many, uh, cities had established fifty feet, hundred feet, three hundred feet. They wouldn't allow food trucks within those buffer zones next to brick-and-mortar restaurants, and the state legislature took that ability to regulate that away as well. So, our new, our proposed ordinance actually implements what the state did and then adds some other things that planning, uh, the, the planning department felt were necessary.
Right, and if I may add to that, and Tina, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, uh, state, uh, did not go so far as to say that all regulations of a city are on the same playing field. It was, it was more towards the business licensing requirements, but as far as zoning requirements, cities may have their own.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, um, the next item then would be the follow-up to what we discussed tonight or approved tonight. It's the public hearing associated with it, right, to receive comments?
Talking of inspection fees, and this is a follow-up for the other fees on the public work side of things.
Okay, uh, ten A to consider for adoption a resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule by adding engineering fee inspection, same thing. Marty? Sorry.
Sorry.
That would be the same thing. Uh, item ten A is the action item associated with the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I don't have that in my mind. I don't know where that is.
Okay. Uh, item B to consider for approval, two lot final plaque called one... Item B to consider for approval, two lot final plaque called 100 West Church subdivision on property located approximately 1650 West, 100 South in the Grove Mixed Housing Subdistrict. Ken?
Yes, so we, we do have this plat for that church in that location. We've been working with property owners for quite some time to get the roadway situation lined up on the west side of the property, and that finally has come to some conclusion with the road agreement. So, we're ready to come forward with that plat.
Good job. Okay, item C to consider for adoption, resolution 2017, yet to come, tentatively adopting the Pleasant Grove City tentative budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, and the RDA, right? Okay. And then item D to consider for adoption, ordinance 2017-25, amending title 2-2E beautification and shade tree advisory commission of the Pleasant Grove City municipal code by implementing a water conservation program, electing a secretary treasurer historian, and other housekeeping changes, and providing for an effective date. So we're gonna have Mark Bishop come and present that. Did you have any comment for us?
No, we kinda talked about this last week, so we just moved this one for the recreation grant tonight, so.
Great. And then et cetera for the other items. All right, coming back to tonight's agenda. Libby? Nothing? Corey shaking his head, no. Okay, Ken?
Nothing else.
Dave?
Nothing.
Dionne?
Nothing.
Marty?
Sorry.
Two things. I invited you to a Public Works Awareness luncheon. This week is Public Works Awareness Week, and our local chapter of the American Public Works Association is putting on a little luncheon for elected officials, and, and I wanted to invite you to that. You're welcome to come. It's on Thursday, it's free, done at the Utah County offices, down, down there on University Avenue. Two other things that have come up, one is, North County Boulevard is getting reconstructed from 13th West to State Street. UDOT has, they're already under construction. They're shifting all of the traffic to the north side of the road. Right now, it's shifted, on Monday it was shifted. They're milling up the pavement, and then they'll shift, they'll put the pavement back, and then they'll shift everybody to the south side. With that, we have a need to put in a storm drain line from on 13th West across, so that when that property develops, then we can discharge water to our current pipe underneath I-15. And now is the time to get that done at a significant savings as compared to trying to get that done later. It's a 36-inch pipe that needs to be installed. They're going to have the whole road torn up, so all we have to do, they're gonna have traffic control taken care of. So, significant cost savings. We need to put a pipe in for 200 feet across that road, so it's out of the right-of-way, and we can get that done. Just be aware, I've, in, in my budgets are a couple of our stormwater projects that have not been designed, that were not getting done this year, that we're planning to use some of that budget. I've got, this is something I have to do in the next week. I found out about it last week, and I'm adamant that it needs to be done at a cost savings of thousands and tens of thousands of dollars. Right now, it's $44,000 to get the line across the road, is what our, we receive three bids. I think it's up to $50,000.
We can actually do $50,000 based on our budget resolution, from another project.
Unless there's a problem, then I guess we just write it up, and doesn't the mayor just sign? Okay.
So just wanted you to be aware of the project, that it's something that, that we're going to pursue to get done, and that work needs to start this week in order to benefit from that. And then first east, waterline scope has been determined. We've got a bid or a proposal from the engineers to include that in the Utah County project, which we'll be bringing before you, so you can see that as well, because we wanna include, get that included there. Significant savings, again, because we're combining with that project on the design of that, which is a great, a great thing for us, so.
That's fantastic. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Mike? Sherri? Do you have a microphone?
We were awarded an $8,000 grant from the state for, for technology or books. So-
What are you gonna do?
Well, we didn't have to specify, so that's still to be determined.
Let your new library board members have a say.
Yeah, there you go.
So did you apply for that yourself?
Yes.
Awesome.
And we have a program that ended about an hour ago, Day of the Child. It's started as a program for Spanish speakers, but it's kind of morphed into both. And we, I don't know what our attendance was, but last year we got a couple hundred people there. And the Panda Express fundraiser, we do this every year, go eat at Panda on Friday, bring this with you, or it doesn't do us any good. And 20% of your purchase goes toward our teen summer, summer program, and that is most of their budget, honestly. It, around $250 is what they got last year, which tells you their budget's not huge. And they use that mostly for prizes. So go help them out.
Sherri. Denise?
Just later this afternoon, I put out a new one-pager, Scott calls, just to show you what will be proposed in the budget coming on June 2nd. And so if we need to make any changes, we can make changes before we do the final adoption in June.
This reflects the 100 that we discussed.
The 100 to transfer to roads. And then I put in a little bit in there about a couple of things that people had questions on, like fire retention, and just what those positions would be doing. Hopefully it provides us some information.
Tina?
No, I don't have anything.
Kathy? Diana?
Yes. I just wanna-
Been very good tonight, Diana.
Thank you. Which is so odd. Had a delightful day on Saturday. The, it was the opening day of Little League in Pleasant Grove. The weather was spectacular, the PG royalty sang the national anthem beautifully. I, I'm sure that they would sing at any event, so they did a fantastic job. They honored, oh gosh, they did such a good job. Paul Skanover was honored. That was just delightful. And I did throw out the first pitch, and I am very, very happy to say that it made it to the catcher. It was a lob, but it, I did not do an Obama, it made it to the catcher, anyway.
Very good. Eric?
Nope.
Sid?
Yeah, so a couple things. And this question is for Tina and possibly the council here. Okay, thank you. So I had a, a city employee ask me about, they were interested in running for a position this year in the city. I know several years- Yeah. And, but I know several years ago, we enacted a city policy that didn't allow you to hold both a council seat and an employee seat, or mayor, whatnot. Is there anything in place? And it got me thinking about a council member or mayor holding a dual role with being an elected official in two municipalities, such as county, state, city, and if that's something that would cause a conflict of interest that we should look at as well? Do you know of other cities that look at that, or other situations?
No, of any, I don't know of any current prohibitions on it. It's certainly something we could look at. I, I don't mind doing some research and calling other cities and see if they've got some rule in place. I think it would require us to do a, an ordinance amendment in Title 1 or 2, 1, with regard to the mayor or elected officials qualifications. But I'm happy to ask a few other cities, but I'm not aware of any. But in terms of could it create a potential conflict, the answer is yes, depending on the, on nature of the elected offices, right? And we're, if you were, I don't know how you could do it in two different municipalities, but if you did it in the county, or the state, and the city, then I could see some potential conflicts, because we're not always on the same side of the negotiating table with either one of those entities.
Okay.
I had a conversation on this topic with David Church a couple of years ago, when I had people soliciting me to run for the county attorney's seat. And he, he shared all kinds of interesting stories of people that served as a mayor and a sheriff, or in different capacities simultaneously, said that there are times that a party has to recuse, but that there's no other prohibition, just like Tina said, there's no prohibition against it. It happens on a surprisingly common basis in some less populous counties, I think.
I think the key there is, it actually states in the less populous areas where you don't have the pool to draw upon, water goes, it's the conflict. I think it would be perceived and seen as a conflict.
David Church advised that it was totally acceptable, but you have to recuse. Well, you've, you've gotta recuse if you're ever in conflict, but-
Right. I, I think what David said, and I remember the conversation too, is that, you know, there's nothing prohibiting it, and in the smaller, less populated areas, it, it may be okay, but there are potential conflicts. If, there's nothing saying that a city couldn't enact a rule or change an ordinance prohibiting it either. And so it's really just up to you guys whether or not you want to make that provision or not.
If we could just get some more information, then discuss it as a council, maybe in the next couple of weeks, that would be helpful. And I apologize, I, I know it can't be two municipalities, because you wouldn't be able to do that legally, so. I was just trying to throw out-
The county and the city, that's two-
Yeah.
Municipalities.
The other question is, I, and I don't know who to direct this to, I just was wondering about these cameras and who brought these tonight, what it was filming and what the purpose was. I don't know if anyone in the audience can answer that. If it was a city camera, or?
Yeah, I brought those.
And is it filming all of the council, or?
Yeah, so it's a wide-angle lens, it should have all of you in it. It also had the, because we can never see the person that's asking the question, so I wanted to be able to-
So I did have a, a question about that. I think when someone comes to city council, they know that it's being livestreamed, and they know what to expect and the channel to find on. If there's a third party filming them, I'm not sure if we need their permission or not, or if they'd feel comfortable knowing that a third party where they didn't know where the filming was going to end up, or what the purpose was behind the filming was taking place, if that's appropriate to be filming the public in that manner, and also what the purpose was to film us in addition to the livestream being offered to the public.
I can't speak to the appropriateness of it. I think it's appropriate. But as to the law, this is a single, a single person state. I forget how they name it, so only one person has to know it's being recorded.
Well, I think you're mixing the law, right? So what you just quoted has, doesn't really have anything to do with this. What you were quoting was an evidentiary law with regard to recordation. So, I, I don't have a problem with that, filming the council. I don't have a problem with the, the camera, I don't think, on the podium. I do think there might be an issue. Councilmember Lamone brings up a good point. The people in the audience are not giving their permission to be filmed and used in some other medium. So if, if you're just filming the person at the podium, I think they fully expect to be in the public eye. I think they fully expect to be filmed, because they know we livestream, and they're making a public comment. I think just be careful about filming other people that are sitting in the audience that may not have that same expectation, may have a different expectation of privacy. And don't, be cautious about distributing that film in other areas, like if you were gonna post it on social media, or you were gonna use it in a, a media campaign, or, you know, just, I would say be cautious, because they're not putting themselves up there speaking, and they may not want their image used in, in other areas. Does that make sense?
Thank you for the caution. I appreciate it.
That would be the city's disclaimer, if you will, right?
Yes.
We've now shared with you the legal ramifications of your actions that somebody else might take against you.
Yes, and I, and I understand that she believes that that would be the case. I am under a different impression that in a public place, you are able to be recorded.
No, I'm talking about the people-
Yeah, this person over here, wherever they are, I can record them, because they're in a public place. So, this is a public meeting. I know, that's why. So I just disagree.
I think the city's making a disclaimer here.
I'm totally fine with that.
Okay.
In similar vein, if I might ask, at the start of this meeting, Mr. Armstrong had a camera up here by the flag that was trained on the audience at large. That seems like an even greater risk when somebody's allowed to come behind the rostrum and place a camera from the perspective of elected officials out on the audience. Do we know what that was about, or what?
Mine, I, I don't know what it was about, but my observation was it was trained on the podium, not the general public.
More likely to get a wide angle of a lot of the audience.
Agreeing that you have the right to film it. What I'm saying is, if you use that film in some other way, that person that's sitting in the chair right here has not given you permission to distribute their image. That's all I'm saying. The law, the law clearly gives you the right to film a city council meeting, and whosever here can be in the film.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay, so Ben, the same thing would apply with this one as well.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, but might be a good, wise policy on our behalf to not let people place equipment behind the elected body here.
Well, we kinda have to be careful, right? Because I think we're getting outside the scope of the city of Pleasant Grove's jurisdiction. Doesn't that cover press and all kinds of things?
But I wouldn't let press come back here to set up-
I'm just saying, you know, you watch C-SPAN, and you watch a few other things. I mean, there's some pretty powerful people back there.
An ordinance that sets, establishes a press area, right, where press has to be within a certain-
If you wanna do that.
Might behoove us to consider that kind of an-
Perhaps it should all be limited to one area or something, yeah. All right, something to consider. Anything else? Okay, Lynn?
Oh, we're good.
You're good? Okay, Ben?
I'm good. I have a couple of questions, but I can pick them off line.
Okay, great. All right. I wanna touch on a subject that was brought up this, in the first part of our meeting, and it was, the best way to put it is public civility. Surprisingly enough, I, I held the quarterly mayor's business advisory council today, and without solicitation, this is what our business leaders brought up. It was the very subject that they brought up. They said, one of them said, "I'm considering moving to Pleasant Grove, but I'm concerned about the hostility that exists within our community." Another one asked, "What can we do as leaders of businesses in the community to calm the whole thing down between all of us?" And, and I just listened to it as it went around, and I could tell that every person that was there had the same concern. My simple comment on this is as basic and naive as anything else. It takes two to fight. It takes two to tangle. If you don't wanna fight, don't draw it out or acknowledge that the other person attacked. And for those that are doing the attacking, catch the hint that what you're doing is inappropriate and doesn't really add to the value of the peace that we want to, we want to have in our community. Everybody has the right to express their feelings and opinions. When it turns into something like what was discussed tonight, and it's considered bullying, I think we've crossed a, a self-management line, and we've shown that we, as an individual, lack the decency and respect of a human being on how we would wanna be treated. So my only request to all of us, myself included, is treat others as we would want to be treated, and we won't have to deal with this problem. Okay, let's move on then. We've already signed our plats. I think we've kinda reviewed the calendar. We have no city council meeting next week. The cleanup, cleanup day, is that on? Is it already going?
So it goes through Sunday of this week. It's 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM every day through Sunday.
Okay, I've noticed that it's been announced outside of public-type meetings, so it's widely being circulated. Is it being well-used?
I'll find out in the morning more.
Okay, my impression from people is yes, so.
It usually is very busy, so.
That's good. And then when is the county hazardous waste cleanup one that they're having? Do you remember? Was it last week?
Last Saturday.
Sorry, missed that one. All right, we now need to adjourn as the city council and reconvene as the redevelopment agency.
May I make the motion that we adjourn as the city council of Pleasant Grove and reconvene as the redevelopment agency of Pleasant Grove City?
Motion by Ben, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are unanimous. We are now reconvened as the Pleasant Grove Redevelopment Agency. Our task is to review and approve the minutes of March 7th. Are there, is there any discussion? Are there, is there any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2017.
Have a motion by Eric, a second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn as the redevelopment agency, a motion back into council meeting. And then can I continue a motion to motion out of council meeting?
Yes. Okay, we have two, two firsts and two seconds on that one.
Aye, aye.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, we're back as city council. Anything else to discuss? Thank you very much. Just as a note, we covered 21 action items, 11 public comments, and one potty break, and it is 9:30. Thank you.
Nice work, Mayor Dan.
And a partridge in a pear tree.